It looks like we're good to go. So Agenda Item Number Two is the minutes of previous meetings. We've got two of them to tackle. The first is the September first meeting.
Andy, this is April. I'm not sure if we need a motion, but I would like to, if we do, I'll make that motion. I'd like to suggest that we move the minutes to later in the meeting. We have some B V topics to discuss, and I want to make sure that we get those things out of the way with everyone we have in attendance.
All right, I'll leave that to the pleasure of the board. I think that was a motion, yes?
Yes.
I think, Andy, you have discretion to reorder the, um, this is Amy, sorry, to reorder the agendas you see fit as the chair, but if you think we need a motion, I think that that's a fine idea to reshuffle that way.
Yeah, I don't think we really need a motion, but I'd like to hear everybody's opinion. Is everybody okay with moving minutes down?
Uh, this is Anne. I'm fine.
I'm fine.
Okay, um, we'll talk about more at Agenda Review, um, but I'm thinking probably after number four before number five, somewhere around Policy Review, and we can figure it out in a minute.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, so we will move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Immediate Business. Um, we have a number of bullet points or letters underneath here today. The first one, um, procedural reminders, this is something that I added. I put five minutes. I'm gonna try to keep it to five minutes and try to be quick. I wanted to bring a couple of our policies to, um, everybody's awareness, I suppose, the public included, anybody that might have joined us tonight. Looks like we've got a pretty good turnout again so far tonight. The first policy is K E B, um, has to do with complaints about school personnel. Um, I don't want to read the entire policy. Um, the policies are available on S A U fifty-three website, um, under the Pembroke School Board section. I think the biggest thing about this policy is kind of how complaints are made about, about school personnel or about school activities or really any of the above. Part of the reason for this policy is that i- in many cases, if a decision has to be made in some capacity by the school board, um, the school board members need to be impartial in that decision. Um, so for that reason, um, there's an outline process on how to file complaints for, for pretty much anything to, to do with the school. So I want to read an excerpt here. It says, "In the event, um, a complaint is made directly to an individual board member, the procedure outlined below shall be followed. Number one, the board member shall refer the person making to the complaint to the superintendent or for investigation. The superintendent may delegate the investigation to a principal or other administrator. Two, if the member of the public will not personally present the complaint to the superintendent or principal, the board member shall then ask that the complaint be written and signed. The board member will then refer the complaint to the superintendent for investigation. Three, if the person making the complaint believes that a satisfactory reply has not been received from the superintendent, he or she may request that the board hear the complaint. Once a complaint reaches the board, the school board shall receive in advance the written complaint, appropriate written documentation, and the release sought by the complainant. The board will hear and act upon the complaint only by majority vote. Um, number four, the board decides, or if the board decides in accordance to Paragraph Three, to hear and act upon the complaint, it shall determine whether the complaint shall be heard in public or non-public session. Um, and lastly, if the superintendent is the subject of the complaint, the board shall determine whether or not the complaint should be heard in public or non-public session. Um, so that's kind of the process for school board members. If we are hearing direct complaints is to kind of direct them to...
Excuse me, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Um, am I the only one, maybe just by, am I the only one who's audio got handy? Or is everybody else experimenting that too?
Uh, I'm not sure if anybody else could hear me, but you, I, I'm hearing you very scratchy, Amy.
Okay, I'm gonna, um, hang up and...
Okay. All right, so I'll go ahead. Um, Amy can look these up on her own. But, um, the other paragraph that I wanted to point out was towards the beginning of, of this policy. Um, it says, "Any complaint presented to the school board, to the board about school personnel, employees, students, or administration will be referred back to the superintendent. The board will not hear or review complaints until such complaints have first been brought forth through the appropriate and applicable administrative procedures, and the superintendent or his or her designated has had a reasonable opportunity to seek or resolve the complaint." So, um, again, this is just kind of a reminder, if you have a, a problem with something that's going on in the school, the general process is to reach out, if it's a classroom issue, to the classroom teacher, if it's a building issue to the principal. Um, these things can be elevated up to the superintendent, and if a reasonable response has not been attained, um, then you can request that the board hear them. Um, so I just want to make sure that people in the community know the right way to get things in motion here. Um, the other policy that I wanted to quickly touch on is B E D H, Public Participation in, um, at Board Meetings. Um, there's a lot of good stuff in here, but kind of try to hit the highlights. Um, we do try to keep public comments fifteen minutes. We do try to keep individual comments to three minutes. There are exceptions to these sometimes. Uh, we also do give precedent to folks, um, from Pembroke, from the, the school district. Um, and also, we give precedent to, um, topics that have, or, um, sorry, comments that have to do with topics that are on the current night's agenda. Um, we've had very heavy and long meetings, really since, uh, COVID started. Um, so I would ask to please keep that one in mind. If you, we certainly welcome any public comment there is, but if we can keep those things directed towards topics that are on the, the meeting agenda tonight, um, that would help us kind of move things along a little bit. Um, process-wise, any individual deciding to speak shall give us his or her name, town of residence, and group, if any, that is represented. Um, presentation should be succinct, succinct. Again, try to limit to three minutes. There are some privacy items in there that would be good for anybody to review, and just a reminder that the, the intention of the board for public comment is not to engage in dialogue or debate. The opinions expressed by a citizen during public comment are the opinions of the individual speaker and not necessarily that of the district, its board, or its administration. The board regards citizen comments as a time to accept public comment only, while brief factual questions may be answered by the board or its staff at the board's board chair's discretion. Detailed questions directed to individual board members or the board as a whole will be taken under advisement. So again, just kind of a procedural reminder of, um, what comments should look like, what you can expect to hear back from us or not hear back from us for comments. And if you do have complaints about, um, staff or procedures or anything else at the buildings, to please make sure that those are going through proper channels. You want to make sure if you do have concerns that those are getting addressed. Um, but if you, if you bring them to the wrong place, you're gonna get cycled around until they finally get to the right place. So that's all I wanted to say on that. And we can move on to Agenda Item Three B, which is our first public comment section. So again, we'll leave that open for fifteen minutes. Um, if this is the first time that you've joined us on a Webex meeting, um, the way that we do this is, uh, you should be able to find a raise hand button somewhere on your screen. If you have a comment that you would like to add now, please go ahead and raise your hand. I'm going to have, looks like Mr. Morris is our host tonight. Lucky guy. Um, he'll go through and tick off people that have their hands raised and give them a chance to speak. Once those are done, um, or if we get close to the fifteen minutes, I will have him open a few phone lines at a time. So if you're on the phone, at that point, I will, I will let you know that it's your turn to speak. You can state your name. I'll recognize you and you can go ahead. Um, so with that, we can go ahead if we have any hands.
We do. Uh, Elizabeth Richards is first.
All right, Elizabeth, you've got the floor.
Thank you so much. Um, I, I'm Elizabeth Richards. I live on Jack's Drive in Pembroke, and I wanted to speak quickly about the school reopening, uh, that I know is on the agenda. My, our family feels that the hybrid model is working extremely well. It's providing a good balance between the interaction our kids are craving with teachers and peers while taking calculated safety precautions. As you consider the next steps, we hope that you will strongly consider maintaining the hybrid schedule that's working well and that everyone's adjusted to. Uh, if the decision is made to go fully back in person, um, we would not feel safe sending our kids after listening to the principals of school, of the schools talk about, um, the inability to maintain six feet of social distancing at full capacity. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, Brian G is next.
Hi, this is Brian Gleeden from Pembroke Street in Pembroke. Thank you. Uh, there are a few short points I'd like to make. To begin addressing the Pembroke School District Decision-Making Matrix dated nine fifteen twenty, one of the benchmarks that needs to be met for a full reopen is less than one case per one hundred thousand in Merrimack County. According to the COVID nineteen school dashboard, there are no counties in the state that meet that criteria, yet there are many other school districts successfully fully open. As a matter of fact, with just over forty-two thousand new active cases countrywide in thirty, uh, excuse me, three hundred and thirty-one million in population, the entire country is nowhere near less than one case per one hundred thousand. That benchmark needs to be revisited, reevaluated, and changed as soon as possible. Secondly, we are reassured time and time again by the administration that virtual learning would be different than last spring's pandemic learning. The experience at Hill School so far has shown that those reassurances were false. Once again, my daughter and many other students are assigned roughly twenty minutes of workbook activities and some reading. The environment is not conducive to learning. These children are being robbed of not only valuable education time, but developmental time with their peers. Another scenario unique to Hill School, as Three Rivers and P A both have extracurriculars such as sports available to them. Combine that with Mondays being utilized as makeup days when they're virtually extensions of the weekend and some cohorts missing additional days like this upcoming Friday. There is no other way to put it. I feel this administration and this board are failing the students, their families, and this community as a whole. Our community deserves it better. Lastly, on the COVID nineteen school dashboard, removing all colleges and universities, there are six hundred and thirty-one schools listed in the state with a total of thirty active cases, or on average point zero four cases per school. Not giving families the option to return to school fully at this point would be preposterous. If you feel that it's acceptable and reasonable to not have a plan seven months since the pandemic arose, please reevaluate your commitment to this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Tori Barber is next.
Good evening. Um, my name is Tori Barber, and I am a, uh, I have been teaching at Three Rivers for ten years. I am a resident, not Pembroke, um, and I have, I am also the president of the Education Association of Pembroke. The teachers of Pembroke have worked tirelessly over the past several months to ensure that social, emotional, and education needs of our students are being met in seven, several different modalities. Realizing that tonight the school board will make an important and difficult decision to return to school full-time or stay in the hybrid model, I felt it is a pru-, I felt it prudent to provide some context on the full return from the perspective of the teachers. Our mission above all else is to provide the best education and safest education possible for the students in Pembroke. Teachers believe that the education of our students is a cornerstone of the community, and that the association feels that the current hybrid model is the best and safest way to fulfill that mission. While far from perfect, this model provides the opportunity for students to have the more traditional in-person experience while still ensuring that the state's safety measures adopted by the state and the Pembroke School remains intact. Teachers are continually imagining and refining their craft in order to provide their students with the most robust curriculum possible. We would love more than anything to see that all of our students face-to-face every day, but we must ensure that this is done safely. It is our current hybrid model, teachers have been able to arrange desks arranged schedules in order to allow for the minimum of a three-foot of distance between students in classroom. If Pembroke returns to a full in-person model, this measure of protection that is detailed in the state reopening guidelines and implemented in virtually all places and businesses across the state is no longer feasible. Not only would social distancing be a thing of the past, recklessly I might add, but the problem of missing classes due to the busing issue would be exacerbated due to the added number of students requiring busing each day. Speaking on behalf of the teachers, we truly believe that we are doing everything in our power to provide the best education possible in the hybrid model. We also strongly believe that a shift at this point to a full, open return would ultimately increase the chances of having positive cases within the school and the need to change education models once again. As we have already seen in other schools in the S A U, both Allentown and Epsom had to shut down parts of their school due to positive results. Furthermore, contact tracing through D H H S appears to be slow and cumbersome process. In addition to removing safety measures with a return to full in-person learning, we will lose the Flex Day on Monday, which teachers utilize to meet with our fully remote students.
Tori, you got ten seconds.
Oh, develop and refine lessons on remote instructions will adversely affect the ability. The A P and myself would encourage school board, um, members to visit and to spend the day with me and other members in the classroom to see what a typical day looks like for both students and staff in the current model. Kind of shorten that up, but this document has been submitted to Patty and uploaded into your drive for you to reference back.
Thanks very much.
Okay, next up is Kelly Elmarico.
I'm Rebecca Way in Pembroke. I have three students in school, one at T R S and two at Hill. Um, thank you for listening. We need the option of returning to school full-time for those families that are comfortable. It's just absurd. We are failing our children in Pembroke miserably. My third graders are spending less than an hour on work on remote days, literally one hour, not even. And my middle schooler does her check-in on Mondays, but essentially Mondays are just an extension of the weekend. They need to be returning to school. We are going on eight months of this, and it's getting worse, not better. If we're going to remain hybrid, we have to come up with a better remote plan. It is pathetic at best. Every other community seems to have it so much more together than us. It's really embarrassing. And this virus isn't going anywhere anytime soon, so our school board has to do something, or it's time to vote for a board that will do something for our children. Our kids are falling further and further behind, and my third graders watching a video about how to use a bathroom at school for their entire remote learning day is ridiculous. And what about the poor Cohort B group that's missing out on a bunch of in-school days due to holidays? There needs to be a major change, and it's time to send these kids back to school full-time. If they can eat at a restaurant, go to Chuck E. Cheese, go to the store, go to Cowabungas, and we as parents can spend hundreds of dollars out of pocket per week to send them to virtual learning facilities, then by the grace of God, these kids could be in school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, next up is Tim Girardi.
Evening, everybody. Um, so, you know, as always, I think my points are known. Um, I've spoken at most board meetings, and it seems as though each board meeting, there are more and more parents that are echoing the comments that I have made, um, previously. We need a plan. We need to get the students back into school. Echoing earlier comments, my students are not being challenged anywhere near to what they should be. Um, it is, it is absolutely absurd that, um, remote learning is twenty minutes of actual learning while they're here. They need to be challenged more. We need to give the teachers the resources to be able to work remotely. In the absence of that, that's where we are today, and that's where we were several months ago when the pandemic hit. We need to move things forward. We need a plan of attack. We need the board and the administration to give the parents the option to send their students to school or have them work remote. We need these different tools based on individual comfort levels with this pandemic. Please, I urge you, let's have positive discussion around this, move things forward, and let's get our students into school, or if parents are not comfortable, figure out an option that works for them. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Next up is Kristen Doyle.
I need to speak tonight. I am first and foremost a parent of twin second graders at Hill School and a fifth grader at T R S. Secondarily, I am a social studies teacher at Pembroke Academy, so I have vested interest in all our public schools. Like many of you, I've been watching the posts on social media surrounding some vocal dissatisfaction with certain elements of our Herbert hybrid learning situation. I wanted to be able to shed some light on the teacher side of this discussion since I can sense a lot of frustration from parents. Please know that you're not alone in your frustrations. Your child's educators are also missing the old way of doing things. We miss seeing full classes of smiling faces and being able to comfort your child when they need a hug. And please, please know that we are trying our very best to be everything your child needs us to be. We're trying to keep them in our buildings as safe as possible, all while trying to expand their eager young minds. There's been quite a bit of conversation around Monday Flex Days. At the high school, we use this day to email parents and students that are missing assignments, and some of us hold Google meets with our exclusively remote students, and others use it for individual meetings with students who require it. And we use this day to plan our week. You see, just about every teacher has at least one remote student in their classes. I have twelve, and they're scattered throughout each of my five classes. Some teachers use Mondays to make instructional podcasts for their students on their remote days. Others use the time to create other instructional materials to give to their students on remote days. Since I livestream all my classes, I use those Mondays to have individual Google meets with students who are absent and need supplemental instruction. If we lose that Monday and still retain our fully remote student caseload, I'm honestly unsure how this system could be adequately maintained. At the Hill School, I know that teachers offer two-hour-long time slots on Mondays where they are meeting with both students and parents. They're gonna drop in meetings. You can come in if you need to. Mondays are also when the grade-level teams meet. They prep all their seesaw videos and instructional materials, and they upload all their weekly seesaw content. On the days they are with our students, they have to also carve out time to, to give their remote students feedback on their seesaw assignments, and there are upwards of fifty assignments these teachers need to be grading and commenting on daily. Most teachers get only forty-five minutes a day to do this one task, all while upholding the highest standards for the students that are physically in their classroom. While some students may finish their work more quickly than others, teachers at Hill are asked to create content that would roughly take about two wish hours to complete. All the grade-level teachers have also shared with families a suggested schedule for their children that include other activities that kids can do outside of their assigned work. I have full faith that these dedicated educators are doing everything they can for our children. Teaching during a global pandemic is extremely difficult. Parenting during said pandemic is even harder. If we as parents and teachers continue to work together to help our students succeed, then it seems the best way forward for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dan, roughly how many hands do you still see?
Uh, one hand and another that was up, but then was taken down, so I...
Okay, so, so let's take that one and then check on the other, and then we'll check the phone lines.
Okay. George Wang is next.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Uh, George Wang and Chana Wang, my wife, are here. Uh, we live on one sixty-six Buck Street in Pembroke. Uh, at the risk of sounding like a pariah here and, and, and becoming a villain in the eyes of the teachers, which is absolutely not my intention, thank you very much to the school board and to the teachers for your efforts. We are not suggesting that they are not monumental. Uh, we are suggesting that it is simply not good enough. The situation that we're experiencing right now with a first grader is, uh, it, it's difficult to, to actually watch where I can go to Walmart and pick up an activity book and see more engagement from my son in doing that than an entire week's worth of, uh, remote learning. It's not that I believe that this is the intention of, of his teachers, of the board, of the administration. It's simply a matter of the execution as it currently stands is not conducive with a learning environment that is challenging our son, is improving him academically, is improving him socially, is doing anything of the sort. There is a great number of challenges here, and I'm not suggesting that they are easy, and many of them are really without a good answer. I am saying that I genuinely believe we must, 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 must get our kids back into school so that they can go about learning. And if people are uncomfortable with sending their kids back to school, I fully understand and appreciate you, and I'm not devaluing your opinion at all. I am simply stating that for what seems like the majority, that is not the voice that I'm hearing. It's not what I'm hearing from many of the parents, and it's not what I'm seeing in my own home. I urge the board to vote with what the people are saying. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the, uh, hand that went up, but then went down was Mark Dumont. Mark, did you have anything you wanted to say? Sorry, one moment, I can find you and unmute you.
Sorry, Mark. I can't... In my...
You're on sound.
You are, but if you're with someone else, it's gonna happen to you.
Yeah, Mark, you gotta make sure you have one device playing the audio. We're getting terrible feedback.
Um, hi, it's Mark Dumont, um, from, uh, Donna Drive, Pembroke, New Hampshire. I have three kids. Can you guys hear me right now?
Yes.
Can everybody, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I have three kids in the school system. Um, the hybrid's not really working. Um, it's noticeable the kids are learning a lot less, and, um, we, I look in New Hampshire and I, and I see how well New Hampshire's done and continues to do, and I look over to our, our neighbors to the South Hookset, and they're open and they're doing good, and I see no reason why we shouldn't be opening. At this point, I remember at one point af- after Governor Sununu, Sununu said that the school districts, he was gonna let everyone decide for themselves. He also came out later and said that he, he, he didn't think that, um, all these schools weren't gonna take advantage of the guidelines and open up. And I feel like, I feel like, uh, I feel like Pembroke isn't, isn't taking advantage of the option to open up. There's no reason for us not to open up. We can open up safely. Hookset's proved it. Other schools have proved it. Um, there's no reason not to get these kids back in school. If, if we, if we don't vote to open the school up at this point, it'll, it's, it's gonna be pure politics, and, and then that's not acceptable. Um, uh, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Um, Dan, if you could, let me see how many we've got on the phone. Ooh, there's a lot tonight. Uh, maybe open up the first four.
Okay. Four phone lines are open.
Okay, so if you're, if you're on your cellphone calling in, um, a few of you have lines open right now. If there's something that you would like to say during the public comment section, just go ahead and state your name. And if you're saying your name and I don't hear you, it's because you're not one of the ones that's unmuted right now.
Emily Spensky.
Emily, I heard you. Go ahead.
Oh, am I talking? Sorry, I'm on two meetings at one time. Um, I am fully in support of opening schools back up. Um, my son is at Hill School, and while I understand the teachers are doing the absolute best they can, um, I feel like my son is regressing, going backwards. He hasn't learned anything new. Um, the days that he's home in his hybrid model, he has maybe twenty minutes worth of work that he needs to complete. Um, and I have been finding that I need to supplement material, and I'm not a first-grade teacher, so, um, that is very challenging, especially when my husband and I both work full-time. Um, so I am fully in support of going back to school, um, with a, a good majority of the town, um, and especially with the elementary school, the kids are not getting what they need, um, in the hybrid model. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we can take the next four?
Rachel Harrington.
Rachel Harrington, I heard you. Go ahead.
Hi, um, I'm in Pembroke, and I have a student at T R S, and I, I'm noticing a pattern where I think a lot of the frustration seems to be centered around the Hill School, and I can't speak to that because I don't have a student there. I just want to put in a vote for the fact that hybrid for our family at T R S has been working amazingly well. Um, I have an eighth-grade student, uh, he's in one of the cohorts. He's absolutely loving the experience right now. He would probably love to be back full-time, but what he's been describing to me is that he's excited to be able to be in there two days a week, seeing his teachers, seeing his friends. Um, the kids have been doing great with masks and social distancing and understanding how that works, and it's giving them an opportunity to be able to have some normalcy. Um, I also have a family member who works in Epsom, which just went full remote. I'm sorry, just went in full and had the experience of having a positive student in a grade that because they were fully in, they had to wind up shutting down the entire grade. And I think that's my, one of my fears for Pembroke is I understand that the numbers are low now, but as has been spoken to by a bunch of people already, um, there really is no good opportunity to social distance, as I understand it, especially at T R S, but I think also at the Hill School. And what I would hate to see happen is that we jump the gun, we go in full because we want to get the kids back in, and then as soon as we get a positive test, we wind up having to shut down a grade or shut down a large amount. Right now, my son has about ten people or so that he interacts with throughout the day. So, I mean, God forbid, one of them tests positive. That's about ten kids or so that are immediately exposed as opposed to an entire grade. And I think that's possibly maintainable, that the school keeps open and keeps most of those kids in there. So I would also just like to say that I really appreciate the amount of work that's being put in by the teachers and also the staff, the nurse, the, I mean, the amount of people that have been reaching out on a regular basis to keep us on track. So I just want them to hear that. The parents really, really appreciate that. The kids really appreciate it. Thank you. And so obviously, I would ask that the school board keep us hybrid as opposed to going full.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, anybody else on the phone? Go ahead and state your name.
Lauren Dwyer.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Lauren.
Oh, thank you. Um, I would like to say thank you. Thank you to the board. Thank you to our amazing staff. Um, everyone is working so hard. Um, we have been presented with it's just not an ideal situation at all. Um, I want to say that I can wear two hats. Um, I have a master's degree in the art of teaching English. I'm also a parent and I have a child with a disability. Um, so a lot of my daughter's friends, um, she has a lot of friends that are immune compromised. Extraordinarily immune compromised. And I would like it, it would be best for my child if she could attend the school, um, have her services. It's just not possible right now to do that safely. And we want um, an equitable and accessible education, but primarily we want our community to be safe. We want our children to be safe. And we have to remind ourselves that we're thinking of safety right now. And it's difficult, it's hard. Um, it hasn't been easy in my home every day. The teachers have been amazing. The staff have been amazing, but it's tough and I get it. But we need to focus on keeping our staff safe, keeping our kids safe, and keeping our community safe. Um, so I would urge you to not reopen the schools and work on the hybrid model that currently exists. That's all I've got. Hope you guys have a great night.
Thank you. Um, so I think we're on like nine through 11, nine through 12, something like that. And we're past our 15 minutes here, but I know there's a lot of people that have something to say tonight.
No one on the phone, hard dialed in.
Um, all right, so we've got a bunch of, a bunch more phone lines open. If you wanted to add a public comment, go ahead and state your name.
Tanya Davis.
Go ahead, Tanya.
Hi, um, first of all, I do want to echo the sentiment that we do appreciate what the teachers are doing. We know and and the staff, we know that they are being put in a position that's not ideal and they are working really hard um, to support the kids. I understand that people who are uncomfortable with the idea of opening entirely, they have an option to stay remote. I ideally would like my kids to go back to school full time, but if we do stay in a hybrid situation, which seems to be working for some people, I think that we just need to look at the way that we're handling the remote sessions. It was fantastic for the first two weeks where it was scheduled and um, very structured and organized. Since then, I feel like a lot of parents are saying their kids are drifting. There's not enough um, work or focus time and it's basically like a run on vacation. Uh, understanding that opening the schools may not be feasible based on the size and the distancing needs, I would just urge the board um, to help and support the teachers in developing a way for that remote session to be more structured and just more beneficial to our students, whether that's having remote teachers um, hold sessions or some other way of actually maintaining some structure on those remote days. I think that is a good way to try to keep everyone happy, but also keep moving forward. And as an absolute um, last statement, I do not want to go completely remote. I know a lot of people have spoken about how some of the other districts have opened or partially opened and have experienced um, some occurrences in their schools, but even our partner Allenstown had some experience with some coronavirus in their school. They closed the school for a couple of days. Everyone went back. There was not an outbreak. There was no um, super spreader event. And um, I just appreciate that you guys take into consideration all the different inputs. Um, and and just try to find a way to make it the best that it can be for the kids. And that's all. I appreciate you guys letting me talk.
Thank you. Um, I think the remainder of the phone lines are still open, so if you are on the phone and you would like to speak, uh, just go ahead and state your name. I'm sorry, was it Ben?
Uh, Ben Ficken.
Go ahead, Ben.
Hi, I'm I'm on uh, Elm Street. I have a daughter in Hill School. And uh, really my only concern is that uh, cold and flu season is starting up. So it might cause some more uh, more issues for parents with kids getting, you know, the regular flu. So if we open up 100%, I think it's gonna be a tough, tough uh, November, tough December. So I just urge the board to uh, push that decision out a little bit, give it a month, give it two months, just to kind of let things uh, play out and and see what's going on. Uh, that's all I got. I'll be quick. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, last call for the open phone lines. If you're called in and you've got something you want to say, go ahead and state your name.
Molly.
Go ahead, Molly. Maybe that was the dog's name. Last call. All right, I think we will go ahead and close the first public comment section then and move on to uh, agenda item 3C, which is agenda review. So before I forget, um, we moved the approval of the minutes um, down. I think if unless anybody has a strong um, feeling otherwise, I'll put it just before policy review. I think the meat of the meeting will will pretty much be done at that point. Um, anything that would be a lot of public interest. Um, everybody okay with that right before number five? See a lot of nods?
Thank you.
Um, I think I I got a few different emails from a few different board members this week, and I think that each of those things is on the agenda. But if you emailed me and there's something that I missed, it's not on here. If you want to go ahead and let me know, we can find a spot for that. If there's any other questions about the agenda.
Andy, I have a couple when you're ready.
Go ahead.
Um, we have to add two consent items and they probably will require some discussion in non-public session. So we'll add them under consent, but then take them up after non-public.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. All right, um, then we will move on to 3D gifts and donations. Anything? No, that's a sad story. Okay, uh, then we will move on to uh, consent agenda. Um, Patty, do you want to introduce those now or do we have to wait for non-public altogether?
Um, it's, yep, we have two staff requests and they'll need to be discussed in non-public and that's it.
Okay, um, then we will move on to 3F. Um, so tonight we have uh, Jerry Flurry here from the Budget Committee and more specifically the CIP Committee. Um, for anybody who doesn't know, Capital Improvement Plan, it's a plan that the town puts together when the different departments for kind of, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Jerry, but basically more um, big ticket items, long-term expenditures, purchasing vehicles, uh, police cars, things like that that require a certain level of planning. Um, and he is here to talk with us tonight. Um, I'm not sure why I put 10 minutes on the agenda for this one because it might be a little bit longer, but anyway, I'll I'll give Jerry the floor and and he can fill us in.
Well, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, for those of you who don't know me, uh, my name is Jerry Flurry and for a number of years I have chaired uh, Pembroke's Capital Improvements Program. Uh, as Andy said, the the point of the CIP is to look at all the things that the town is doing across all departments uh, to make sure that we don't have uh, big ticket items that are gonna hit the budget all at one time. The CIP begins meeting in the early summer, meets throughout the summer months, and upon its conclusion makes reports to the uh, the Budget Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and tonight the School Board. I think that uh, to save time and to focus on what's of relevance to this particular meeting, uh, I had uh, sent out a copy of the CIP plan for review by board men- uh, board members. And uh, if you have that copy, I would like to call your attention to page 15 of that report. Page 15 looks at what the CIP Committee had in its possession when it uh, went through uh, its its final meeting and assigned ranks to all of the different things that had been requested. And you'll see on page 15 that the school district had a list of items beginning with replacement flooring, replacement cameras and maintenance, district pickup truck, a district tractor. And the CIP did not rule or rate any of those items. And the reason that we didn't is because it lacked uh, the formal structure that's present for uh, other departments and enterprise funds. Uh, at that point, it was in the 11th hour and there was very little time left. However, I took it upon myself, uh, one of my other roles is I'm also a trustee of trust funds. So I took a listing of the various trust funds that the school district has and then took the expenditure items that had been uh, submitted and compiled by Mr. Coughlin. And that's the the various expenditures, the various capital reserves. With some assistance from uh, County Administrator Dave Jodwin, we were able to put that in in the last minute. And that resulted in what you see in the CIP reports on pages 11, 12, and 13. In essence, it created lines where you begin with the balance of your existing capital reserves. You plan for how much money you're gonna put in those capital reserves. And then across the matrix, you see how much you're going to spend in which year. When you come to think of it, this is a very fundamental step. All this says, all this really says is if we're planning to spend money in any particular year, we know where that money's coming from. When it's in a form of capital reserves, there has to be a marriage of those amounts that are going to become available and warrant articles that are part of uh, the district's annual meeting so that the voters can say, yes, we're authorizing money to go into these capital reserves. And then if they look at the CIP, it gives them an idea out for several years how that money will be spent. Without that special combination of a fourth, foreknowledge of where the funds are coming from and when they're gonna be expended, all you're really saying is we would like to spend some money, but we don't know where it's coming from and we're not exactly sure what year it's gonna be spent in. That to me seemed a bit irresponsible. I knew that something was better. So I really want to thank both Dave Jodwin, the Town Administrator, and Josh Coughlin, uh, your facilities manager. They worked on this with a very short window of time to pull together what I had given them. And I think that what we have here is the beginning of a very uh, useful tool so that when you're looking at those capital improvement projects, they're gonna be done across the district, you will know where the money's coming from, what the current balances are, and what year that you can, you're planning to make the expenditures. So at a simple glance, you can tell, am I within budget? Am I over budget? Is this practical or not? So uh, really, that's all I had to say. I just wanted to create an awareness that uh, the association between CIP and the district uh, and 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 the school district has never been stronger than it was at the conclusion of this year. So uh, I think we've got uh, a good basis for moving forward. And I would hope that um, in the future, we can use the same format that maybe we fostered a better understanding of what the objective was. And it will be beneficial for the citizens of Pembroke, the taxpayers of Pembroke, the school district, and it'll also be a helpful when school district budgets reach the Budget Committee that those capital improvement items will be identified, the funding sources will be known, and it should all flow much better. So with that, uh, unless you have any questions, that concludes my presentation.
Thanks very much, Jerry. Um, I guess before I open up to board members, Josh, was there anything that you wanted to add from your end? Okay, um, thank you very much. I appreciate uh, Jerry, Josh, David, everybody. It's great to to see town side and school side working together to to make processes better. Um, that's awesome. I think that's where everybody wants to be. Uh, do anybody from the school board have questions for Mr. Flurry?
Um, this is, go ahead, Anna.
Um, this is just a, I guess, a general question to um, Andy is when we start to is the Pembroke School Board going to make an adjustments to the CIP from what Jerry has outlined? Or are we gonna wait till we get to our portion of the budget in December, presenting it to the Budget Committee?
Um, there's not any plans as far as I'm aware to change anything in in the CIP until we tackle the whole budget. Um, I believe there's, we will have our first draft of the budget much sooner than December, but we do present to the Budget Committee in December.
But right now, the CIP doesn't know, we have a laundry list of items, but they don't know where the money is gonna be coming from. We don't know if it's taken out of reserves or if we're gonna ask the taxpayers for it.
So um, I think that's, that's a lot of the work that Jerry and Josh did here was to give some indication of where those funds would be expected to come from for the different items.
Yeah, Andy, there is one point. And there is one point I'd like to make that I I overlooked. Uh, one of the items that the district's hoping to to address is a replacement of a couple of vehicles. And if you look at what's done uniformly across the town, whether it's the police department, the fire department, they have uh, vehicle replacement capital reserves that are unique for that purpose. They also have them for equipment, but equipment is generally something much lower in value and with a a different, different lifespan. So one of the recommendations that I put forth is that the district really should look at a warrant article to a, to establish a vehicle replacement capital reserve. And then you could either fund it with uh, uh, excess appropriations or uh, uh, you know, unanticipated revenues, or you could go and say, well, we're gonna, we're gonna do this as something that hits the the tax rate. Uh, in either, or you could transfer uh, from other capital reserves if you wanted to, but essentially what Josh was facing was he knew that he was gonna be replacing a vehicle with a, with about a $40,000 minimum price tag. And he was allocating like 15 grand a year billing, building toward that, but that wasn't really accumulating anywhere. He was kind of calculating the depreciation without coming up with savings. So one of the things that in the uh, in the draft that I shared with you is that is a recommendation that a new capital reserve be established by warrant article for vehicle replacements. That will serve you well for the future because you're not gonna stop needing pickup trucks and vans and and other equipment in that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
The the follow-up Andy I have also is that we just put replacement florings, replacing cameras. You know, we didn't say where these items were gonna go. So in the future, I would like to to recommend that we put in here, like we have ADA upgrades district wide. We need to put what these items are going to be before we go to CIP.
So I guess, uh, yeah, I mean, we we can talk about that when we start putting everything together. I think, you know, just my opinion, certain documents are to be put out for general information and we can't include, you know, paragraph write-up on each one of these things. It would turn it from a 22-page document into a 150-page document. But I certainly think there should be easily accessible information. So if somebody looks at that line and says, hey, what's the flooring all about? They could cross reference that with a plan somewhere. Um, and I I assume that Josh has all the information on what those things are. Josh, go ahead, Josh. Just got a hand raised.
So I just wanted to add that the school district CIP, everything identified on that list is identi- is also identified coming out of the applicable trust fund. What we did was change our version of it and put it into the formalized towns version of it. So if if we're talking a vehicle or a truck or or a van, we are gonna take the recommendation of Mr. Flurry. We're gonna ask to create a vehicle replacement trust fund, transfer the money in from an applicable trust and start that process. As well as if we were to continue with our replacement flooring, that would come out of the school building, trust fund, et cetera, et cetera. So all those identified column projects, needs, et cetera, um, are identified at at the applicable trust fund as well.
Andy, I just have one follow-up question. So on page 12, where it shows our list of ADA upgrades and roof replayer, after Hill renovations, in the middle column, it's funded by a bond. So all of these items are gonna be um, asked to be bonded?
Uh, I I can ask Jerry, but I think the way I'm reading that is the Hill renovation itself, if it happened, would be a bond. Everything else has a separate funding source. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. It's it's important to understand that CIP will also look at any bond issues. If you're gonna build an entirely new school building for $10 million, uh, that's gonna hit the tax rate. And so CIP's job is to look at what other bond. And so part of CIP's job is to look at what other bonds do we have? How is that going to impact the tax rate? And to make sure that it's staggered out. So that's why something as major as a major renovations at the hill, you're not going to handle that with a capital reserve, and you're not going to pay for it out of your operating budget. You're probably looking at millions of dollars there. So that's why there's a reference to having to float a bond to do it.
Jerry, is that, sorry, Jerry, is that something that of a project like that? And, you know, we have a subcommittee looking into that and it's been a discussion for some time. But something of that magnitude, is that something that CIP would look at? I'm just not sure if that's something you guys tackle or not. Would you, would you guys weigh in on that?
If it's disclosed to us, yes, there would be some certainty. I can give you an example of of how that that does work. The the sewer department is looking at a bond issue in the next few years. Because we can't get sufficient capacity from Allenstown. And they're looking at running an interceptor line. And Concord has already indicated that they would take some of Pembroke's flow. And we could do that in a way that would allow our industrial base around 106 to grow further and everything else. Because many of these projects are hung up because of insufficient sewer capacity. So they're looking at that saying, you know, we're going to need a bond and we know roughly where it's going to be coming from and and where the where the source is. That that went to CIP. So it allows CIP to look at so it makes no difference whether you're saving money for the next fire truck, paying off a bond for something you've already got, road improvements, recreation programs. It gives you an overall picture of what the taxpayer base in Pembroke is going to be asked to support.
Thank you. April, did you have a question?
Um, I, this is April. I just wanted to thank Mr. Flurry for coming to us and also emailing us the CIP report in advance of this meeting. And I also just wanted to publicly commend Mr. Jodwin and Mr. Coughlin. I'm very pleased to hear that you all were able to work together to get the information that CIP needed. So thank you to all those players as well.
Thanks. Amy or Jean? Nothing from Amy. Jean, are you out there?
I'm here. No, I'm off that.
Okay, Anna, do you have anything else?
Uh, no, but thank you.
All right. All right, Jerry. Thank you very much for coming and I will see you at the next NBC meeting. All right, so with that, we'll move on to agenda item 3G, which is a bus stop appeal. Patty, you want to handle this or do we want to see if Linda's available?
Sure. So, um, as you know, the school board is tasked with approving all of the bus stops. And once in a while, we have a request from a parent for a bus stop that Dale Transportation feels they're unable to accommodate. Remedy for that is to appeal to the school board and put their request in writing, which the parent has done. And then Linda also puts her, we have a form that we've been using, a little spreadsheet. And the Boden, our transportation coordinator from Dale, will also give her opinion. Typically, we, in the past, we've allowed Linda to speak to the stop and then allowed the parent to speak as well. I know Ms. Higgins was unsure if she would be able to join us. And unfortunately, I think both of these people are going to be on the phone, so Dan's going to have to go hunting to try to figure out who is on what line, so it might take a minute.
Thank you. I do see a mobile user that just says LB. Those are the right initials. I'm not sure if that's the right person or not. And it just, oh, no, it's back. So Linda, is that, are you unmuted? Oh, no. It's flashing in and out. Okay, it's got. Yeah, I think we better. Okay, so Mr. Morris is unmuting the phone lines one by one. So if you're on the phone and don't want to see it, you can be quiet right now. Linda, are you available? I'm not hearing anything. Christine, are you available?
Guys, Linda's here.
Okay, Linda, go ahead.
Regarding the bus stop, it was 3:52, Bricket Hill. She did call me last week. I didn't deny and I didn't approve. I just left it that at this time I could not add any more stops. And because of revamping. And that was left at that.
Okay. Let's see. Let's check in the Cs. I don't see. I see Chrissy. I don't see a Christine. Yeah, I don't have any other way to tell. So let's see here. Exactly. We have, we have a letter from her. I'm going to just check and see if her phone number happens to be on it. And if I can identify that way, I don't think it is.
Um, Andy, I think the letter is pretty detailed in what the parent was looking for. And I'm wondering, so if Linda's thinking that she didn't approve it or deny it, should we wait until after the bus routes to see if this is addressed in the proposed routes? Maybe this, or Linda may, now if this is going to be addressed in the proposed routes?
Yeah, that that seems reasonable to me and that would give, I know that the person that wrote in was not sure if they were going to be able to be at the start of the meeting. That would give them a little bit more time to arrive as well. So we can, we can move that down. We do have a lot of details in both Linda's response and the letter that we got from the individual. So I think we can have a discussion a little bit later anyway. So where is, let me just find transportation's under 4A. I'm going to make myself a note to circle back to the bus stop at that point. And for now, we will move on. So agenda item 3H is town elections. I'm not sure, Patty, do you want to handle this one?
Sure. So we had been discussing the upcoming elections and the difficulty of having those at Three Rivers in general, as well as having students present in the building. And simultaneously, Anna and I had a conversation and she was thinking the exact same thing of discussing relocating the elections. So I would let her make that request on behalf of the town if she would like.
Thank you, Patty. Yeah, we had discussions with Mr. Marston in September. And I haven't spoken directly to Mr. Morris, but the town would like to you, the town clerk and the moderator would like to move the elections to Pembroke Academy. This November election, we're going to have thousands. So the last time Trump was on the ballot, we had almost about, I think about 4,000 voters show up. We already have 800 absentee ballots to complete and to process. So we need a lot of room to do that. So we would like to make the request to move all the elections going forward to Pembroke Academy.
Thanks, Ann. Discussion from the board, I guess. And then I would like to also hear from Patty and Mr. Morris, I guess.
This is April. I'm just curious when that, when we receive those type of requests, typically is the area in the building discussed as far as is it, you know, is it just open to the academy wherever or is it generally limited, like, let's say, to the gym or the cafeteria?
Thank you, April. Yes, they are requesting the cafeteria and also the gymnasium and the hallways in between. Because it is going to be a very large election, the town clerk would like to come into the building and start setting up in the gym on October 30th and would be able to remove everything by November 4th.
Thanks. Other questions? Go ahead, Amy.
Thanks. I had two questions unrelated. I wasn't sure if there was a, I guess if we take action on this, is, I I'm not sure about the intersection of the select board membership and the school board membership. You know, so I wasn't sure if all of the school board members would be acting on this request, given our various roles. And then unrelated to that, the AREA committee has been discussing often the the group's desire that when any major decision affecting Pembroke Academy is going to be made, that they have, you know, advanced notice and be able to provide some input on a decision. I'm not, it's been a little fuzzy to me, like what is and what is not a major decision involving Pembroke Academy. But in light of those communications, you know, I just, I think we would be wise to err on the side of this is a major type decision and somehow collect that input before we make a decision. Though I note that this is really right around the corner. So those were my two things. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jean, did you have anything? I've got a couple of things, but I'll wait.
Uh, excuse me. As far as I understand, if I was just digging back to try to find the schedule, but didn't we close school on the 3rd? Today off, so it really won't impact the other, the other towns aside from possibly the setup, if that's an issue with any of them. So I don't see it being a major problem, Amy, at this point because that November 3rd date is a no school day, so.
Yes, so go ahead, Amy.
Comment, I, I think the tenor of what I've heard from the other members of the AREA committee is that it might be helpful before the Pembroke School District decides that something is or is not of impact to the sending schools. If they could just have a chance to articulate some thoughts about it before we decided that kind of like for them. But with the acknowledgement that the AREA agreement gives the Pembroke School District the authority to make the final decision.
Right. I, I think I feel similarly about what their thoughts were, Amy. I guess my concern, and I guess I would ask Mr. Morris. I think Ann said, setting up on 10:30, which is a Friday, and I assume it would be after school, so that would be fine. It would be there for the weekend, which shouldn't matter. And the 3rd, like Jean said, is already a day off, so that shouldn't matter. But if it's not cleaned up until the 4th, then we're potentially impacting the school on Monday, the 2nd, and Wednesday, the 4th. So I guess I would ask Mr. Morris if he has an idea of could we still have instruction on those days? Do you know how much of an impact this would would be? I, I mean, I assume the cafeteria is, we use that every day. If you don't mind weighing in, I'd be interested to hear.
Yeah, I, I did have an informal conversation with Mr. Goff about this a few weeks ago and Mr. Seraphin. Personally, I think it it makes sense as a voter in town. But I do have concerns regarding a few things. One is, you know, what you had mentioned about it would, you know, clean up or set up and clean up would occupy, you know, the cafeteria, we wouldn't be able to do that if we needed to maintain setup during a school day on a Monday or to allow for cleanup the following day on a Wednesday. And the gym would impact instruction on a Monday or a Wednesday for the students that have gym classes. And, you know, November can be pretty dicey with planning outdoor activities. But nonetheless, I mean, I think we can work around some of that. The biggest caveat I have is, and I I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it wasn't just for this particular election, but elections moving forward. And the one concern that is pretty significant in my mind is we really should not have students in the building during any election. Particularly as they, which is a good thing, we have more and more people voting. But that becomes very problematic when you try to run a building with students inside. While you are wide open to the public for voting.
Um, Andy, can I just interject? The cafeteria would not needed to, would not need as much time for setup. Because that is going to be set up just for the supervisors of the checklist and people coming in to register. So we would not need, I assume Jim Goff does not need that cafeteria for that length of time. It's just the gymnasium is going to be such a large, we're trying to space out. We're going to have 10 books that people can come in and register. So it's basically the gymnasium and then, of course, the hallways, you know, during the election. We do have November 3rd off. Jim Goff also did say for March, he knows it's a professional day. And I did talk to Patty concerning that. That's a really large activity that Pembroke Academy does for their professional day. So if we need to move the election back to Three Rivers on March 9th, and then after that, all elections will be going forward to PA. Jim Goff said that would be fine if that was an issue.
Thank you. Another question I had, I guess, we're talking about how it might impact PA day before and day after. Like Ian said, this is, it's probably going to be big turnout. If we don't move it to PA, are we going to have the same exact problems at TRS anyway? Obviously lesser impact because we won't have to worry about the sending towns. But it sounds like if the Monday and the Wednesday are in play here as far as setup, it sounds like we have to just pick which school is going to be affected, right? I assume even if it's at TRS, setup would happen earlier and and tear down wouldn't be until the day after. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. We, the reason why this is going to be so large for November is because we need to do the social distancing and space everyone. And the gymnasium would be impacted for just the setup. And the takedown on November 3rd, we're not going to be done until midnight or 1:00 in the morning. So to ask the town employees to come back in and dismantle at that point would not be feasible because they're there all day with us. So that would be the most impacted. The reason why we are thinking Pembroke Academy would be better is because this is a day that the students are not in and the amount of people that we need to park their cars to go in and vote. According to the state law, we cannot impede anyone more than 15 minutes their ability to vote.
Understood. Other questions from board members? Or are there other admins that would like to weigh in on this one? And are they hoping to have a final decision tonight? Or do we have some time to, I know it's coming right up?
Yeah, they would need a a decision this evening. They would be posting signs on Three Rivers door to express where voting would be. We're going to hit social media as quick as we can. We're going, we can't do mailings at this point because we just don't have time to get it to all the residents. But another thing that Jim would like me to ask the school board and also quite a few people who are listening is we need a lot of volunteers in order to get this to be able to run within a timely manner. So we need about 10 people. They're called runners. So after 9:00 in the morning, if we have a lot of high school students, you just need to be 17 years or older to open up the absentee ballots and process them.
Great. So I guess, I guess we need people to weigh in if we need to make a decision on this one way or the other. Personally, I guess I feel it makes, it makes sense, social distancing wise, to have it at PA. I'm just concerned, I think I share Amy's concern. There's a lot of discussions going on right now with the AREA schools that, you know, their kids are going to be impacted by this if we, if that building has to be modified in some way for three days, I don't know how we in good faith, tell them that we made that decision without talking to them. I don't know that TRS is a good alternative, but I don't think the town has another alternative. So, go ahead, Amy.
One of the other things that has come up at the AREA and also in a lot of public comments that I've received over email is you know, using the superintendent's more. comments that I've received over email, is, you know, using the superintendents more. And so I think what we can do tonight is, you know, authorize the use of Pembroke Academy, so long as, you know, Patty coordinates with Peter, and they coordinate with the principals, and everybody has, you know, provided input and is okay with that plan. That would allow us to move forward in a timely manner, while still collecting input. And that way, if, if there is a strong objection, that can be reported back to us, and we can reconvene if we need to. I, I guess I would like to hear, I'm, I don't think, Patty, you've provided your input overall on the question, and then in particular about what I'm suggesting about, you know, using our administration to move the issue forward.
Sure, thanks. I think Dan and I have spoken, John and I, and we've had concerns over the past couple of years about having voters in the building when there are students in the building for obvious reasons. It's been a little bit easier at Three Rivers in terms of blocking areas off than it would be at Pembroke Academy, I think. March would be a concern. Every year, we have our, our S A U-wide Professional Development Day in March, so it would just be some conversation and seeing if we can rework that, and we can fit the whole S A U into the different areas and classrooms at, at Three Rivers. We may be able to make that, we may be able to make that happen. But maybe it means just waiting on the March decision, if that's okay, just so that we can have that conversation and make sure that works out okay. I am concerned about the setup and the takedown. Completely understand how big this election is going to be, and that we will need to take a look at that. I'm not sure how that's going to work out for Dan, in terms of losing the use of the gym, and, and if we have space with social distancing to relocate the students out of the gymnasium that would typically be in there for, for P E. And then for the A R E A agreement, I think I would be happy to speak to Superintendent Warburton and get word out to the other districts. I think my, I think the agreement, aside from the conversations that we've had, the agreement talks more about curricular changes. So I'm assuming that since this really won't have a big impact on the students and their learning, I don't think. I, I'm feeling pretty confident that we're okay, but I, I like your suggestion, Amy, to kind of go and back and let them give some feedback. And, you know, there may be something that we're not thinking of, that I could reach back out and let the board know if there were strong objections.
Thank you. Others or follow-ups?
Andy, this is April. I'm very concerned with this board not taking action, particularly for the upcoming November election tonight, simply because of the time constraints. I would feel comfortable moving forward in making a motion specifically for the November election. But, and I'm totally okay on talking about future election days at a future meeting, but I do feel like this is a time-sensitive matter. And that, also as a citizen of Pembroke, who the majority of my taxes, like everyone else's, go to the school district, we have a duty to perform our civic duty, and we should share our school buildings, particularly for a presidential election. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean, did you have anything you wanted to weigh in on this one?
Not at this time.
All right. Um, well, I guess.
Amy, I'll go ahead and make a motion to authorize the use of Pembroke Academy for the November election as described by Ann Bond, so long as Superintendent Sherman circulates that information to Superintendent, I'm never going to pronounce his name correctly, Warburton.
That's it.
And the principals, and no strong objections are raised.
This is April, I'll second that motion.
Okay, any other discussion?
Andy, this is Anne. My question would be, if I give this information to the town clerk tomorrow, what information, how long do we need to wait for the superintendent of the area, the other area schools to get back to Patty, to get back to either you or Jim Goff?
Amy, do you want to amend your motion to include something to base? I don't know.
Sure, but I'd like it to be reality-based, and I'd like Superintendent Sherman to say, like, is, you know, Friday this week a reality-based target, is, you know, Monday next week a reality-based target? I, I just don't know where this lands in the multitude of other issues going on right now.
Sure, I think we are in contact with our board members pretty regularly, with our board chairs, and I'm, I know that Peter would not have a problem reaching out tomorrow. We can also ask Kathy Stefan to help us give people a call, and generally, they're pretty reachable, so we can do our best to wrap it up tomorrow.
Okay, so then I'd like to amend my motion by adding at the very end, by Friday, October 9th.
This is April, I'll second the amendment.
Andy, just one more question. So who would be giving this information, either to myself or Jim Goff?
Patty, whatever you want. If you want to send it, or you can send it to me, and I'll send it on.
Anne, is it okay if I just email you and let you know?
Perfect.
Excellent. Other discussion? Okay, so roll call vote. We have a motion to approve the use of Pembroke Academy for just the presidential election this November, with the caveat to have Patty look for any strong opposition from Superintendent Warburton or the boards of the other A R E A schools, with a response expected by this Friday. Do, I guess, roll call vote. So, Anne?
Wait, hold on, Andy. Did you say the response was by this Friday? I believe I heard our superintendent say tomorrow. Did I misunderstand?
No, she said she could get it tomorrow, but I believe Amy's motion said Friday, I assume, just to give her some leeway.
Um, I'm not going to approve a Friday if our superintendent is confident she can accomplish that tomorrow.
You actually seconded the motion.
I didn't hear the date, so. Was the date given of 9th in that amendment?
Yes.
Andy, can I just interject that I think Friday would be giving Jim Goff enough time to get the information started, to get it out to the residents, if that helps, April?
Thank you.
That does help me. Thank you, Anne.
Okay. Any last comments before we go ahead? Okay, um, Anne?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Amy? I didn't hear you, Amy. I think you got your mute backwards. You were unmuted, then you muted yourself.
Yeah.
Thank you. Jean?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Um, so we will move on. And we will, um, we will add a discussion of the March elections, as well as elections going forward to a later agenda. I don't want that to fall off. And maybe if we, if you don't see that on an agenda in the fairly near future, throw, throw something at me.
Yes. And Andy, I just wanted to interject. I apologize I missed this information, is that because of the size of the elections that we need, we cannot hold them out on any town-owned property. We just don't have the room. We're not able to go to churches, and the Armory has offered us their space, but according to the law, we can't have any federal building used for an election. So we have been trying to get different spaces. So I just wanted people to know that.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to 3I, which is compensation of hourly employees. Turn it over to Patty.
Thank you. I don't necessarily need any action to be taken tonight, but I did want to get this on the agenda. It occurred to me at some point this year, we may find it remote. And last year, we had several conversations about compensation of hourly employees during remote times, and which staff members are needed when we're remote, and which may not be. So I wanted to put that out to the board. As you know, our paraprofessionals now are represented by N E A New Hampshire and the local union. So we would need to negotiate with them if we were going to change hours or wages. So if you wanted to move forward with that, that would be something that we would want to get scheduled, and then just be prepared for a conversation perhaps about custodians and food service workers and those kinds of folks. If we do go remote, I didn't want to wait until the last minute when we were already there.
Thank you very much. So I, I don't know, if anybody has discussion on that, we can go ahead. Otherwise, I think it's just something for us all to start thinking about, so we have a starting point for discussion when that issue is closer to being in the forefront. Does anybody have anything they would like to comment on that now?
Andy, I just have a question for Patty. Is all of the staffing being used? I can imagine for custodians, it would be a yes, but I didn't want to guess. And also, the food workers, are all of them being currently used at this moment?
Yes, absolutely. So when, when we're in the hybrid model, everyone is completely fully scheduled. I was just thinking ahead to, you know, when we, if we have to go remote for any period of time, payroll comes up pretty fast. We're actually, you know, running it and processing it a week in advance. So I didn't want it to come upon us without us having some conversation about it. And if we do think that we're going to be making some changes, then we would need to schedule negotiations with the paraprofessional union, and I would be willing to reach out to them and talk about that, if that's something the board wants me to do.
Thank you.
Any others?
It, it would be helpful for me if, as a next step, we could have, like, a recommendation, you know, the, these are the people we're talking about, this is what we did in the spring, this is, you know, now that we're approaching this in a more proactive, less rushed way, this is how, you know, administration recommends we handle it. That would sort of, I think, be a more efficient way for us to get our arms around this. And I do agree wholeheartedly. I hope it's like car insurance, you know, we never have to use this plan. But if we do, you know, have the car accident, so to speak, better to be ready.
Right. Is that, Patty, is that maybe something that you could bring us at our next meetings? A, a little recap of the situation from the spring and, and a recommendation going forward?
Sure, I, I already started preliminary conversations with Josh about the custodial staff, and with our food service director about the food service employees, trying to figure out what time span they would still be fully needed, and, and when we might want to relook at the full staffing level that we have now. I guess I'm, I'm more looking for direction right now. I'm happy to give you a recommendation, that's a great idea. But would you want to reach out to the paraprofessionals to start negotiating some kind of an agreement, like Amy said, so we have something when we're ready?
Yeah, I was going to add this at informational items later, but I think it's okay to share. I, I received, and I believe you were copied, of, of an intent to negotiate by that new union anyway. So that's on our plate, is to set up a negotiations meeting with them. So since we need to do that anyway, makes sense to me to at least have a preliminary conversation. Obviously, you know, we'd have to bring it back to the board and have non-meetings or whatever to come to some sort of understanding. But if the other board members are comfortable with that, I think getting that conversation started and getting a meeting on the books is probably a logical step from a couple of different points of view.
Yeah, absolutely, Andy. We, you know, I've been look, looking for this, seeing what was going to pop up, and that was a question I was going to ask tonight, you know, concerning when these negotiations may, negotiations may start, so. Be a good way to lead into it.
All right. Any other conversation around that piece before we move on? Okay, then Agenda Item 3J. Have we ever had Jay on here before? November meeting change. So I think we have a meeting to go for Election Day. And there was a suggestion of possibly moving it to a Thursday. I can't remember if board meetings have, or board members, rather, have Thursday commitments. Is, is Thursday, November 5th able to be done by most of us?
Andy, the Budget Committee meets on Thursday, so I don't have that calendar. I know you and, and Jean are on there, on there.
Yeah, I don't think, if I remember right, we had a conversation at the end of the last meeting, and I don't think they set their full calendar yet. I believe they're going to try to get one done in the later part of October. But I don't, I don't think we have many dates set yet. I can reach out to Mark and see if that would work, or see, see if he's planning on having a meeting then. Does anybody else have Thursday commitments on, on November 5th? Okay. Patty, I'll reach out and see if, if Mr. Lepage is thinking there's going to be an M B C meeting then. There is, depending on, you know, what his agenda looks like versus how heavy our agenda is. You know, maybe, maybe Jean could fill in for me here, or fill in for me there, one of the two, or a different day.
I think our only other options, I, Mondays, I believe Anne said that the Select Board meets on Mondays. So that would leave us that week, that would leave us Friday night. So if you want to just find out about Thursday and get back to me, that would be great.
Will do. Okay, that takes us to Agenda Item Number 4, Continuing Business. And Letter A is Transportation. So Patty, did you want to talk about that, or do we want to get Linda back on?
Sure, we will need Linda. She's going to review the bus routes. And then Amber is here, as is Jenny Jones, who also spent many hours working on these routes. And I want to publicly thank her for her tireless energy on this. I just want to start by saying that we've all agreed that the current situation's unacceptable. Our goal immediately was to prevent students from missing instructional time. And I know that there has been a team meeting to review the routes, and they'll be presenting routes to you this evening for your consideration. And then I think, just to let you know, I think we still have some work to do. So Linda, Dan, I'm not sure if you, Linda was on, if you could unmute her, that would be great.
I'm here.
Great, Linda, go ahead.
Hi. The bus route that Mrs. Jones and I worked on, there was still a two-run, but where my numbers have been so low in, in ride, students riding, today I had the most on one bus was 14 in the morning, and the highest was 18 in the afternoon. I would like to combine one, Route 1, Run 1, with Run 2, before we even go to the schools. I would like to see 7:35 at Three Rivers, if I could do a drop off at 7:30, and then be able to be at Hill for 7:40. This would cut the time. And then, the end of the day, they could get out at their 2:20 and their 2:35.
So Andy, is she asking to combine all the bus routes? That, our list here says Run 1 and Run 2 on each color bus?
Is that correct, Linda?
I didn't get all of it.
Are we combining Route, Run 1 and Run 2 on every single color bus?
Yes, like yellow is Run 1, and, but where, where it says Blue Bus A M, that would go with Yellow Bus first run. Okay, because he only has like four stops out back right now. And I could combine Pink with no problem, Yellow is, not Yellow, but White is able to do it. I chart to Green Bus, she could make up a ton of time just wasting time downtown.
Thank you.
And if I could get the routes that you see, the stops approved, I would keep them on there. But I would like to take away the times. The counts are going to be very important, especially if we stay with the social distancing on the bus. So I really, if parents, other than the ones I have writing already, anybody else wants to write, I would like to hear from them, so I can keep track of my count.
Okay, I want to, Jenny, could you weigh in a little bit?
Great, can you hear me?
Yep.
So if I can back up just a moment, currently, when we looked at the, the school bus routes, our goal was to have the students be in school full-time, that they arrived on time, and that they were dismissed on time. When we started to look deeper into the routes, we noticed that there were less students on the bus than when, what When we started to look deeper into the routes, we noticed that there were less students on the bus than when what we had anticipated at the beginning. I'd like to share some of the information that we were able to gather um that was making it really difficult for us to make some concrete decisions. At the beginning of the year, well, August, before school started, we asked parents to fill out transportation forms. Of the possible six hundred and eighty forms that we look to have information about their child and where they are going after school or how they're getting to school, only two hundred and sixty-seven forms were received. So many of the decisions that were made in terms of bus routes and, and the timing of the bus routes was really dependent on just two hundred and sixty-seven forms and Linda's expertise and knowledge in terms of what routes have been in the past, what students have typically taken the bus and relying on her knowledge to, to start those routes. And there were two factors involved. There was a shortage of buses and that uh we have a pandemic, so that's difficult to work on those two big variables in, in making routes. So because of that, the shortage of number of kids on the bus and the lack of knowledge in knowing what, how students were getting to and from schools, we had a very broad um bus route that could incorporate all of those students that needed to, to use the bus. And in doing so, we noticed that uh not a lot of students were utilizing the bus, even though on their forms, they, they requested that. So we have some bus stops that are empty. We don't have as many students on the bus. Our bus routes are very long and because of that, we were having to have kids arrive to school later than, than typical and, and dismissed earlier than what we would like them to be dismissed. And that domino effect, that ripple effect caused some students not to ride the bus because it was important that they stayed at school for the entire day and their parents were using their vehicles. So our numbers in terms of knowing who really is utilizing the bus, who wants to utilize the bus, it's hard to say until we are back at school, you know, at the start of the day and at the end of the day. So Linda and I have talked at great length. Yes, we recognize that the numbers are lower and we could probably condense the bus route so that we could fit potentially all of the kids on the bus. That would be great, but realistically, we don't know how many kids would access the bus based on not having the information from the forums and not knowing what will happen when we are school, are in school full day. So we do currently have a schedule of two bus runs. Um, but those bus runs fall beyond the time of the school day. So students would arrive at the physical start of the day and would end at the appropriate time at the end of the day. So in order to do that, in order to get the two runs in the allotted time that we need them to, so that there isn't a lot of lag time in the morning where students need to have coverage, we would have to have a longer bus run and then a quick turnover run so that we can get two bus runs in the morning and in the afternoon would be the same thing. In order to get two bus runs and in a lot of time, we would have to take a look at the bus stops and we would have to adjust them. So Linda and Dale Transportation have always taken care of our families and making sure that they have transportation that might go to their door, um, door to door or, or in areas where there is a cluster of students. In order for our bus routes to be efficient, we really have to take a look at the travel, um, the turn that it makes, the uh traffic in the morning and in the afternoon and how that impacts the bus uh routes and trying to find paths or routes that they are most efficient. And because of that, in order for us to do two bus runs, we really have to have clean bus runs that are, that are really quick and that the bus stops would change so that they are central to a group of students that are in that location. That doesn't always apply in the North Pembroke area because those houses are further apart, but that bus route is longer because of the length of the roads um and getting to and from school. So I feel as though it would be great to maybe do the two bus runs to get an understanding of who would be accessing the bus when school is carrying on through the full school day. And then based on the numbers off of that, we can take a look at that and maybe condense into one run per bus. Unfortunately, a shortage of bus, that's a very real thing for, for us, but also two thirds of um many of the districts that are using bus transportation. There are lots of concerns for bus drivers in terms of their health and, and their safety, but also that idea that we could go full remote or that we're only using bus drivers four days a week. What does that do to impact their pay? And that is a factor in acquire, getting bus drivers to, to want to do this job. So I feel like the bus driver shortage is something that's on the horizon and something that we have to address now and maybe in the future. And how can we have more efficient runs? And we might have to change the way in which we have our service in providing door to door, might not look the same. Um, so I would suggest that we do the two runs to start. Perhaps maybe ask families to give updated transportation forms so that we have more information moving forward so that we can make adjustments in the bus routes if we need to and that, that, that they can be subject to change, but um there will have to be some families that might have to travel a little bit to their, their bus stops. Um, it's tweaked a little bit, but Linda and I have something that we can propose for the school board to take a look at.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from school board members?
Um, Andy, this is Amy. So are we looking to make a motion to approve the recommendation tonight?
We, we do need to approve changes, I believe. Patty?
They do need to be approved, but my, my one caution is that these proposed routes, in order for students to be able to stay the entire day, requires us to hire someone to stay with the students after school. So we would be looking at both schools um to hire staff members. Um, hopefully, if the numbers stay the way they are, John would probably need to hire one person, but I think Wendy would need to hire two people. So two, right, Wendy? Yeah. Um, so it would be great to have the ro, rules, the routes approved, but it would be pending the ability to supervise the students after school.
And just to follow up on that, those hires could be of a temporary nature in the event that magic happens and one route has, is, becomes feasible in the future, right?
Yes, it would be an extra assignment hourly or stifended position only as needed.
Thank you. Others?
So Andy, this is Ann. So what I heard is that they're looking to combine, say, the green bus, run one and run two, combine them together. So on the schedule we have here in between those two runs where it says it's stopping at the schools, it doesn't stop at the schools until the very end of that run of two?
Correct.
Alright, so run one for green, when, after it goes Pembroke Hill and Lower Deer Path, it wouldn't be going to Three Rivers and Hill. It would go to Broadway, continue Broadway, down to Glass, then Three Rivers, then Pembroke Hill. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I guess this one's a tough one for me. There are so many details. Um, and I appreciate Mrs. Jones being here. I think it, it was thorough. I, I still don't feel, you know, necessarily knowledgeable enough to, to make this decision. Um, I, I would look for a recommendation, I guess, from um, from Patty, from Mrs. Jones, from the principals, from whoever, whoever has, whoever would like to weigh in on this. I would be happy to hear what you have to say.
Uh, Mr. Marston had his hand up.
Go ahead, John.
Uh, actually I did, but Patty beat me to the punch, but because, you know, the, the biggest issue I have with this is uh we have kids that would need uh support uh waiting for that second run. But I, but I, I do need to impress upon you that the current um situation is we have a, a number of students that missed the first block every single day and the, the last block every single day. They're different kids. So we have students currently that have not been to their last block of, of school all year because they don't have um you know, access home. So personally, um, I would rather work with this, these routes now so that we can have kids there for the entire day. It, it's not just those kids that miss. You know, I have, I was in one class and obviously classes are smaller now, but after the bus took the kids. So now that teacher really can't teach those kids, the, the kids that are remaining also. So I, I really think we need to give the, these a shot. Um, and uh you know, there's gonna be bumps in this road, just like every other wo, road we've been doing, but I think we need to give these routes a shot.
Thanks. Uh, Ms. Gary, would you mind chiming in?
Sure. Um, I echo uh what John is saying. Um, they put a lot of work into it, our goal. And when we sat down with the team, we really said the kids need to be here from, you know, that eight o'clock start to that two twenty. Um, we kinda got, I think this is a compromise. We get everybody in at eight o'clock and we have to have, you know, them, uh, somebody to watch them in the afternoon, but they'll stay. Um, the same thing's happening at Hill. The kids miss out on that last part of the day. Um, and then the teachers do, they can't present any new information, so they're working with the, the kiddos that are still there. Um, so for me, this looks like it's a compromise. Again, I think there will be bumps in the road on this one, but at least it's a place to start. Um, I do think um Ms. Jones brought up a good point that we do need more accurate information because I know I personally got quite a few emails of parents that were choosing to uh do parent pickup and drop off in the meantime. So I, I don't feel that it might, we have accurate information right now. Um, and I think with these new bus routes, we might get more parents choosing to go back on the bus and I wonder how that would impact. So um updated information I think would be really great to uh get.
Thank you. Um, other questions, board members?
Andy, this is Ann and can, um, can I be refreshed on the start times for Hill and then the start times for TRS?
Hill's start time of the students' day is eight o'clock. Um, they can start, they can be dropped off starting at seven forty.
Thank you.
Three Rivers, they currently can be dropped off at seven thirty-five and they end, start anything in about quarter of and homeroom begins at ten of eight.
Thank you.
Um, I guess I'll, I'll throw a side note in. I was looking at this and the, at least in the afternoon, let me check the morning. It looks, there is, um, in the afternoon, there is a stop at uh oh, wait, maybe I looked at the wrong one. I thought I saw a stop at the, the place, yeah, Fourth Range and Brickhead Hill, which is what we were talking about earlier with that request. Um, it looks like in the morning and the afternoon on yellow bus, there's a stop at that location. So um, just as I'd note that I think approving this would also take care of that item.
Can I say something? This is Linda.
Sure, go ahead.
On that, on that bus run, it, it's supposed to have been uh changed to Jack's Drive and Brickett Hill. I believe Jenny wanted to, um, I originally put it Fourth Range and Brickett, but with the request coming in, um, she put these back in, but I can, I just can go with a Fourth Range and Brickett Hill. I wanna keep, I would like all run one and one two with each bus, all one run. And I'd like to keep the approved routes on the route showing on the bus form, but I'd like to take out the times of the ones that we have not picked up any students at so far this school year.
Gotcha.
And that way we could make our times fine. And like I said, they'd have to contact me for what time the bus would be there if they plan on putting their student back on a bus.
Andy, I have a, a question about the request for um the um three fifty-two Brickett Hill. So that Brickett Hill and Fourth Range corner pickup is closer than the Fourth Range request? The five twenty-five?
No, Fourth Range is at the top and she's the first house, I believe, on the right or the left as you go down Brickett. She's right at the top of Fourth Range.
Yeah, she's, it's basically, I had to pull up the map myself, but it's, there's not really a house on the corner, but that house is the closest one to the corner of Brickett Hill and Fourth Range.
Okay, so we can have to go to five twenty-five Fourth Range. She can go to the corner. Thank you.
Yeah, she tried that.
This is April. Um, with that conversation, I am a little confused. We've been presented a list and at the bottom of that list, it says it's subject to change and we're already talking about changing that. So I need to be clear on exactly what we're voting on. Um, are we voting on something that says subject to change? Um, are those changes being made now? I'm very unclear on what's being presented to this board exactly with the recent conversations.
Well, I think um I agree, it's a little confusing, but on the other hand, there, we don't have a motion yet, so I suppose we can still vote on whatever, whatever we want.
So April, it looks like, um, if you have the chart up, it looks like these stops is what they're asking for and merging the run, first run and second run of the same color bus instead of stopping at the school after the first run and then going to pick up the rest of the students.
Yes.
So this is April, but the stops we were presented with at the very bottom, and I need clarification on that, says that the bus routes are subject to change.
We put that on the bus route because if we end up adding a stop or deleting a stop, that changes the times. So we always put that in as a precaution.
Is that a way to get around board approval? I'm not really sure because my understanding was bus routes were to be approved by the board.
Correct, and, and they are. But when I have a new stop coming in and you folks approve it or disapprove it, it either goes on the route sheet or comes off the route sheet, one or the other, if the people have moved. Um, that's all that is.
So you're saying it, it, it's, you're reserving the right to change it, but those changes still have to go through us?
Correct.
Gotcha.
This is Amy. I'd like to make a motion to approve the route adjustment as recommended tonight. Pending uh hiring of appropriate staffing as discussed tonight and subject to reporting back to the board about how it went and making any recommendations for further adjustments at the next board meeting.
I would second that, but um Amy, do you think that, that we could ask for a, a timeframe on how it went? Do we wait two weeks till our next meeting?
Yeah, I think we would be, much as we were tonight, we had background information in our drive in advance of the meeting and we received some oral recommendations. That's what I would be looking for at the November meeting.
Um, thank you. I would second it.
All right. Um, any further discussion? Uh, Jenny, go ahead.
So I just want to be clear. Uh, Linda, looking at the numbers she currently has that are riding the bus, she's saying that she can condense the runs. That would be ideal. Um, but looking at all of the numbers, we can anticipate who would ride the bus when school goes back, that everyone is there from the eight to two twenty time, two thirty-five time. So I would recommend, yes, the routes that were proposed to you, those routes, the bus stops are slightly changed. They are more localized, more on the path of a direct route for the buses. After we maybe do that for two weeks and get an understanding of who's going to use the bus, then we might be able to say, okay, this is, this is the number of students. We could condense it so it's one bus run with the number of students that we actually are seeing. Um, and the only way to really have a better understanding is if we resurvey the, the parents, the families so that we have an understanding. We have many students that are riding the bus that didn't fill out a form and we have many students that filled out a form that aren't riding the bus. So when we look at numbers and we're looking at how many kids can fit on a bus, we're counting in students that signed up and said they were going to use the transportation, but that's a, a spot. but that's a spot that is being held for them where it could be for someone else that hasn't signed up, signed a form. We don't have all of the data that we need to to do what we need to do. The bus routes that you have in front of you are are pretty aggressive so that it's time efficient, so that we can get two runs in. And if we're noticing there's a trend and that not a lot of students are using the bus, then I agree with Linda, we should condense and just do one bus run and fit all of the kids on in that one.
Okay, so to be clear, your recommendation for tonight would be to approve as it shows with two runs for each bus with the with an eye towards possibly combining those two runs in the future depending on numbers.
Correct.
Okay, um and if I could just ask clarifying question, um I understand the difficulties with uh survey results and things like that. But um and I guess maybe this is more of a question for Linda, is our actual numbers something that you guys tracked? Do the drivers report back actual ridership every day?
Yes, they have been keeping the count and um and you had doing that for a couple of weeks.
Okay, awesome, because that'll be important information.
Andy, this is Ann, and I'm gonna have to change my second of the motion. Um I was under the understanding that tonight we were voting on combining run one and run two together going forward, but it sounds like we are not. And if we've already asked the parents to fill out a survey, school's been in session for a couple of months now. I don't think the parents are gonna fill out the survey even if we resend it. So I think if we combine the bus runs now, then um I think that would show us the true numbers.
Right, so that was just Mrs. Jones' recommendation. I guess we would have to go back. I think Amy made the motion, so we'll have to clarify what her motion was intended to do.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought that the recommendation, I guess I'm a I'm a little bit clear if Mrs. Jones and Linda are saying two different things, like there are two different recommendations coming forward tonight, um whether there's a tension between those perspectives. But what I thought was the joint recommendation was I'm looking at a uh three-page document which has the yellow up front, then the blue bus, then the green bus, uh then the white bus, then the pink bus. It's three pages long. It says bus route subject to change, that that was the recommendation for right now. And I'm saying that I am moving that we approve that, subject to all the disclaimers that I said. And when we get the report back with how this went, I expect that that report is going to come back with information such as uh this is the max we can do. It's not gonna be possible to condense them into one run. Or we think these color buses can be one run, but these need to be two for this reason, or whatever the experience over the coming week bears out to be. That's what my intention was.
Okay, so then I guess I'll ask, Ann, with that understanding, um would you like to maintain your?
So just to be clear, and I apologize, so what they're proposing tonight and what Amy is, her motion is to proceed with what is here, that we still are staying with two different runs. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I have to withdraw because on quite a few of these bus stops, I'm not sure you you take, you know, bus white and they stop at two twenty-three Academy, unload at Three Rivers, goes back to two thirty Academy, goes to Pembroke Hill. And you know, some of these other ones, I'm I'm just wondering, in the yellow bus, you know, the first run, seven twenty is Ashley and Bricket, then they go to TRS, not Hill first, Hill's closer to Ashley and Bricket than TRS. So I would have to withdraw my motion because there's a lot of stops here. I'm wondering why they do one school prior to the other.
Okay, so we've got a motion from Amy. Is there another, uh Linda, do you want to say something?
Yeah, the reason why we go to Three Rivers first is because they take their students earlier. So and we go, I know we go right by Hill School, but they don't accept students till seven forty. So we go right to Three Rivers, drop them off, and then back to Hill School.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, so Amy's got a motion to approve as the sheet shows currently um with a couple of caveats. Is there a second for that motion?
Second, Jean.
Okay, is there any other discussion before we take a roll call vote on that motion?
Andy, this is Jean. Uh no, it's not, it's April, sorry. Sorry, definitely April. Um so we are voting on what's on the sheet because earlier tonight, we heard talk of Bricket Hill at Fourth Range and Bricket Hill at versus Bricket Hill and Jack's Drive, but we're voting on what we provided in our drive, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Um Andy, I did have one more question. Um because parents have been asking me and they state this ha X happens, and so instead of me going to the board and saying X happens, I go and look at it. The pink bus is not really following what they have here. At the end of run two, it says um Three Rivers at seven forty-five and Hill at eight. They go to Hill first and then they go to Three Rivers. And I have followed the bus on different cold hard days, so it isn't like I just followed on one particular day. Um I followed it like at least three times now.
So I think that the thing, what I'm looking at anyway, I if I'm understanding correctly, is proposed routes and it is not what's happening right now. Is that correct?
Correct. Run two has always had this information for the pink bus. They said that at seven fifty-four, they're at Three Rivers, but they don't. They go to Hill first and then go over to Three Rivers. So that's what is just my um my questioning. On their first run, they do. They do stop at Three Rivers, go onto Pembroke Street, then Pembroke Hill, but the run two is is different.
It is because we have not been getting any students at Sherwood Meadows and the student at three twenty-four Pembroke Street has not been riding. So when she comes up off in Terry uh and Donner, she just goes up the hill first and then right to Three Rivers.
Okay, and and my second concern is um run two for the pink bus, times have been changed. So they show up earlier and they don't wait until the designated time on this list and they leave um with parents driving down the street with their kids in their car. And um my question is, she also changed, she has her own Facebook page, so she changed the times on the Facebook page, but parents didn't know.
Andy, I'm concerned we're getting off agenda with proposed bus routes.
I think, I mean, this, if we're proposing to change the bus routes to something new, then I don't know if a conversation of prior bus routes is is uh
Well, my question is, if if I'm gonna vote on this, this is what's followed. I voted on a bus route before and it wasn't followed, so that's why I'm asking these questions.
This is April. I do think it would be helpful to kind of um get an overview of what the policy is if the bus were to arrive prior to the time that the student was to be picked up. Is there a waiting period if the time is, if the student is not there at that time? How, what is the protocol and how that all works? Especially where this is a tight schedule that we are being presented with.
But Linda, do you mind answering how what happens if if uh a bus arrives at a stop early?
Okay, if it does arrive early, we have that five-minute window before and after, okay? So just in case, uh we, there's a couple stops, they weren't students at, so we pick up a minute here and a minute there. But we're still within our five minutes prior to our city bus stop time.
Thank you.
This is April. Um I just need some clarity. So does that mean that the bus stops that we're being asked to approve the protocol is that there's a five, possibly a ten-minute window, five minutes before, five minutes after, and that students need to show up five minutes to the sched before the scheduled bus stop time to make sure they don't miss the bus?
Yeah, we have, we always give them a five-minute, be outside at the bus stop five minutes prior to bus arrival. And it goes by, it should be by the time that they were given. I know when the routes first go out, their estimated time. But after a couple of weeks, I adjust the times on it and pretty accurate after that.
Is there a policy that if someone's not there yet, that the bus waits a period of time before going on, continuing on the route?
It's pending where the student lives. If it's on Route three, we can't wait more than probably a minute. Uh if we were down off one of the Donner Drive areas or one of the others and there's less traffic, we can wait a couple extra minutes.
Thank you. So you can, but it sounds like there's not really a policy that says that it will, it may or may not happen.
April, this is Amy. It depends on the timing, right? So if my kid's bus stop is seven forty-six, for example, and the bus gets there at seven forty, they should be waiting because they're more than five minutes early. And my kid's expectation is that they would be out there at seven forty-one, five minutes before the scheduled bus stop and that they would wait until seven fifty-one in the case of a scheduled bus stop at seven forty-six. So that is how it's operated for as long as I've had kids in school riding the bus.
Thank you. That's very helpful, Amy. I'm not sure if that's a protocol or if that's just um expected behavior based on past actions. Thank you.
All right, um I'd like to go ahead and call the question. Um so uh on a roll call vote to approve as uh we've been presented, um Amy, did you want to, could you remind me of the, I'm sorry?
I wanna vote.
Yeah, could you remind me of the the caveats to your motion? There were a couple of
Pending retaining staff and pending report back and possible readjustment at the next school board meeting.
Thank you. On a roll call vote, um April.
Just one other question. If the board should approve this, when would this become effective? When would we find out?
I think it would become effective when we had staff to handle after-school duties.
And how much notice would families receive of the change in the bus route?
Anybody?
Well, we would probably be back, if we stay with this route, we would be back at the school like we have been right along, basically.
What would be the notification process to, for the the families that there would be a change?
It depends, again, when they find someone to, I guess, watch the students for second run. Once, once they have that, obviously routes will go to the um superintendent's office and then they can be posted however they they choose to post or families to get notifications.
Right, thank you.
Is a one-week timeframe sufficient?
Not sure what you're asking, Jean.
Well, I I then we're talking about the notification process. I want to move this along. So we say right now, once we approve this and we find the personnel to man the after-school hours, is one week sufficient to move or to inform the uh the families of the time changes, the route changes, so on and so forth?
Uh Wendy, do you think a a one-week notice period for your families to to understand that there's gonna be a bus schedule change is sufficient?
I think one week, once we are able to secure afterwards, yes.
Right, thank you.
Okay, the vote has been called.
Yep, April.
Um my vote is yes, pending the information that we received that the families will have a one-week notice prior to the change of the bus schedule.
Ann?
No.
Amy?
Yeah.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm a S. Motion carries. Um so I guess um as soon as we have an idea that staff are gonna be hired, uh please, you know, make proper notifications, um whatever you guys feel is sufficient, one call now or whatever, um to let families know of the changes. Okay, um that takes us to four B, school reopening. Oh, Linda, um thank you for joining us. And I'm sure we'll be talking again.
Andy, this is, this is April. Are we removing from the agenda the bus stop appeal? Or were we going to address it at this point in transportation?
Yeah, I guess um I I I'm of the mind that we can get rid of it because the thing we were just presented has a bus stop in the location where the person was asking for a bus stop. So if it's okay with the other members of the board, I think we can move past that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks. Okay, um so four B, school reopening. Uh we've got a bullet point for the decision-making matrix. So if we can get an update on that from Patty, we also have it in our drive.
Sure, so I updated the decision-making matrix and I'll just remind you that the dashboard uses a seven-day rolling average. So in Merrimack County, we are currently at three point six cases per one hundred thousand, which puts, leaves us in the hybrid um zone for that. The town of Pembroke currently has eight cases and the Pembroke schools currently have two confirmed cases. Um we also have others suspected cases that are pending test results, um but we don't have any data for that. The staff absenteeism, in particular the nursing staff, um we are moving further along in the hybrid range where it indicates that it's difficult for the school to provide coverage and manage absenteeism and that there is impact to instruction. And the same for student absenteeism. So I just made some notes and collected a little bit of data from our administration and wanted to let you know that updated data as of right now for Pembroke Academy, there are five staff being uh in some process of quarantine right now. And the Hill School, since the beginning of school, has had twenty-five staff members that were tracked over time. Currently, there are nine staff members uh under quarantine and a total of um eight students have been in different phases of quarantine. I think there are two still currently uh quarantined. And then at Three Rivers, there's currently one staff member and nine students. So unfortunately, um that is an issue that we've heard in other districts as well and our our lack of substitute teachers is um an issue right now. I'll just finish that um the grid and then we'll go back to that conversation. So the the rest of the two items with the cleaning supplies and the compliance with protections, we're doing great and we're still in the green zone. So our um, you know, I just wanna, I wanna preface this conversation by saying that there is nothing we all want more than to have the students back and be back to normal. The dedication that I've seen from every staff member, no matter what their title, from administration to the support staff, the teachers especially, have dedicated to the students. Nobody is claiming that this is a perfect model. There is no perfect situation right now. Normal and we are doing our very best to make adjustments as we go along. And in whatever model we're in, we are continuously providing professional development and and doing our best to support teachers and give them the tools that they need. But just remember, we're all learning as we go. We've never done this before and we're basically reinventing education as we go along. So transportation continues to be obviously an issue. We're fighting to try and get kids to school and to not miss any instructional time if we were fully staffed. We're talking about two runs now. If you double the students with the social distancing requirements that exist, I can only assume that we're talking about more runs than two. Our space is still an issue with the cafeterias. We're in overflow for those. So at Pembroke Academy, we have students um in different locations because we're unable to fit all of the students in um the cafeteria with social distancing, even at half capacity. We have some staff members that have indicated with doctors' notes that if we don't have the social distancing in place, they're unable to continue working. So their doctors have given them notes with permission to work only if there's social distancing in place. We currently have barely uh one to two substitute teachers uh to cover the staff absences right now. We are pulling from all sorts of locations with the grace of our support staff um to come in and cover classes so that we can keep operating. We've talked about um nurses and that if one of them is absent at this point, we're feeling like we would need to be revoked. That's an incredible amount of pressure on our school nurses um to deal with their own lives and their own illnesses if something happens to them. They are so incredibly busy on the on the clock twenty-four-seven, packing so many different things and making so many different decisions during the day that 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 would be a huge issue for us. And finally, um another concern that we've talked about that doesn't necessarily impact our decision right now is that um there's lots of schools around the state talking about holidays because we are still under um a quarantine requirement for travel outside of the New England states. So we know that we're going to have a lot of students and families um and staff members traveling over the holidays and what that would do. and what that would do to impact our staffing. So it is for those reasons, I think, obviously, that our recommendation is to stay in the hybrid model at this time. So the, you know, we talked about this matrix being ordered. And as you can see, if you looked at the, at the very bottom or even at the very top, we would, we're looking not so bad. But in terms of being able to staff the building and provide instruction to the students, we're, we're barely able to cover right now and don't want to end up remote by any stretch. We want to be able to maintain the current model that we have. The other request that I've had from staff members is that it's incredibly stressful for them to think about the fact that we're going to be talking about this every two weeks and they're not knowing how far to plan ahead and, and what might be coming. So along with that recommendation, we're asking consideration from the board to go out for a month. So to revisit this in four weeks instead of two weeks. And that would bring us, if we have the meeting on November 5th, to that point when we could revisit this, this conversation. As people have pointed out, flu and cold season is among us. People are getting sick and when they're sick, they can't come to work. And not only that, they oftentimes have to be tested and we're waiting several days to get those results. So unfortunately, that's, that's what we're faced with right now and did, as you requested, we had conversations as administration, conversations with staff members, and that's where we're at right now.
Andy, this is Anne. I've got a lot of questions. Patty, I apologize, I'm one-handed, so I'm trying to write these numbers as quick as I can. At Hill, how many staff are being quarantined?
The, so since the beginning of the year, we've had 25 different instances of quarantine, but right now there are currently nine, I believe.
Patty, the students. Yeah, students.
Sorry, that's students.
We currently have two staff members.
Two staff. Because I know the letter that's filed said someone in the school community is under quarantine. So is that information that we can give the parents? Because the parents want to know why we're not opening? So is it, can we let the parents know that it's a staff member? Because if you say school community, it could be somebody, you know, it could be one of the janitor's, you know, grandparent or something, you know what I mean? That's living, so that just, school community is just a little broad. So that, I appreciate you saying that. And TRS has one staff and nine students?
So yes, and just to clarify, Anne, we're talking about quarantine right now. So when I said school community in the, in the notice home, that wasn't a positive case. And there are instances when we're only talking about one case that we have to be careful how much we say. So I, I know that that was vague and we sort of struggled with how, how to word that. So I apologize that that seemed a little vague at the time.
So how many at PA are quarantined for students and staff?
Five staff members. And I don't have the, do you have the student number or an estimate, Dan? I didn't get that.
Approximately four students, five staff today. It is a moving target. It changes.
Yes. So are any of these quarantined because they tested positive or they've just been in contact with someone?
No. They can be quarantined for a number of reasons, but if they were positive, that would have been reported out.
So are any of these students positive on any of these students, at any school?
Just the letters that were sent out. Those are the only two. These students are quarantined, but they're not quarantined because they're positive. They're quarantined for the other reasons based on CDC guidelines. So they were in contact with someone. They may have traveled. Could be a variety of reasons.
All right, thank you.
People could become positive, right? I mean, they could never become positive, become positive. That's the whole reason for quarantining, right?
That's right. Yes.
This is April. I'm just curious, with that term quarantine, can you talk about what constitutes that? Because I'm aware about if you mean just the regular sick policy, is that considered quarantining where, you know, if you have any of the symptoms, you're staying home? So could you speak to that, please?
Sure. I'll, I'll do the best that I can without being obviously one of the nurses. The, the nurses make the determination regarding the quarantine unless it was a CDC contact that they may sometimes call people and say, you know, you were directly exposed, you need to quarantine. But every day, the nurse is assessing students. So it could be symptoms, but they may have the flu, they may have a cold, but they still need to go and get tested and be out until the results come back. So sometimes reasons for quarantine can result in a negative test and they can come back. But there are some times when you have to stay out for the full two weeks.
This is April again. In a case where a parent does not consent to a COVID test, is the expectation, could you speak to that, please?
Sure, that's a great question. So we've been informed that we have to presume that that student is positive. So if they don't test, they have to be out the entire time when they could become positive and then two weeks beyond that. So a student could potentially be out for 24 days.
Thank you very much.
Other questions?
So Andy, this is Anne. I attended the area agreement meeting with yourself and with, with Amy. And the other districts are asking us to have more time at Pembroke Academy. Is there a situation that we could say full in for Pembroke Academy for grade nine to 12, but the other students are hybrid? Is that something that we could discuss?
Can we invite Dan to speak to that?
Sure.
You know, Patty had mentioned social distancing, particularly during lunch. That is a challenge for us. The capacity of the cafeteria when we are enforcing social distancing is just under 90. So we have two students at each table and our lunches at hybrid are over that. So we have overflow areas, the main lobby with those benches. We're accessing the senior courtyard. As I said, you know, many meetings ago, going full in would mean that we are not practicing social distancing. So it just really depends on what your risk tolerance is in terms of us going fullback. You know, lunch is certainly a concern. The classroom would be a concern and transition between classes in the hallways would be a concern if we were fullback.
Thank you. So social distancing area, so you're talking, you couldn't even do three feet? I know Epsom is doing full in with just three feet of social distance.
Again, it, it depends on what your risk tolerance is. We could do three feet in the classroom, but that's, you know, that's going to, you know, be based on your risk tolerance. The same would be in the lunchroom. You know, we could increase capacity there, but you also now saying that students are sitting closer for an extended period of time. Lunch is 25 minutes and they wouldn't have a mask on to eat, obviously.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I had a question kind of along the same lines. What, I was looking over my notes from the AREA meeting as well. And outside of Epsom, I had written down that most of the other schools were, were kind of conceding that the hybrid model was probably the best way forward for the current time anyway. And, and nobody was really committal about how long they wanted to stick with it or whatever. But the big, one of the things they kept saying was what they would like to do, like Anne said, is get some more time. And they were, they were asking about the, the Mondays, the flex days, right? And if there was a way that maybe we could have one cohort in on one Monday and then the other cohort in on the other Monday. I know that those Mondays are be, are being used for certain things. Do you think that there's a, a conversation worth being had around the ability to, to use that day as an in-person day for certain people? I guess I'm asking Mr. Morris.
So yeah, I mean, Mondays, it could mean that we have more time in the building for our students. When you break that out by classes, so not only do we have a cohort A and a cohort B, but we also have a green day and a white day. So, you know, you're really looking at one additional class for each student per month.
Okay.
Right? Because they're, well, anyway, it's just the way it breaks out with green and white days. You know, another thing that I do have to say regarding the flex days is, given that we have teachers that are teaching our, you know, almost 70 full remote students at this point, they are using a lot of time during those flex days to meet with those students virtually, to plan for those students. And so that's just another consideration that has been an unresolved issue that I've talked about the past few meetings. And that would be impactful during those flex days if, if we weren't to continue those in the same manner.
Thank you. The other note that I had from that meeting, and I'm, I'm sure that you guys are already thinking about all of this stuff. But one concern that was brought up was just, you know, another year of a senior class that, that is kind of missing out on some things. So I have no ideas or recommendations, but I would certainly encourage, you know, any creativity around events for the seniors, you know, to, to get them, any kind of special things this year they can, they can get would be awesome. I'm sure any efforts would be appreciated. I'm sure you guys are already working on that sort of thing.
Well, Andy, what I heard at that meeting also is quite a few members have students at Pembroke Academy. And they're concerned that their students are not going to be able to compete with the students who are going to be going into college. So they were very concerned with the time that they're not in the school.
Is it, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
Well, no, I'm just saying if, if we're talking about even adding Monday as a cohort day, you know, switching from A to B, I think that's something that we need to discuss or, or consider because they want their students in more time. And it sounds, from what Patty is saying, it's the staff that's holding back from us going in full in. And from Mr. Morris was saying Pembroke Academy doesn't even have three feet of social distance. But I would like to put on the, on the table that we're talking maybe adding Monday as a cohort day, an extra cohort day.
Okay.
Andy, I, do you mind if I speak for a second?
No, I've had it.
So I just want to clarify a couple of things. Number one, I don't, I don't want to say that it's the staff holding us back in the pandemic. And, you know, people are being required to quarantine for all sorts of different reasons. And, you know, our staff have children that attend school in other districts. So if things happen in other districts, then they have to be home with their children also. So it's, it's a staffing issue. It's a trans, a huge transportation issue and it's a social distancing issue. So those are, those are pretty significant obstacles that we're, that we're dealing with right now. And then I also would, I think it would make sense if we could deal with the model right now of learning. And then if we want to have that conversation about that, maybe that's on the next agenda. I'm not, I don't know that we have enough background and information that we could talk about the flex day all wrapped into this conversation. Just a suggestion.
Amy, I would like to get your thoughts. And then Gene had to drop. He's got a family issue. I had a conversation with him about this earlier and he just messaged me and said that he was comfortable with me sharing some of his thoughts and gave me a couple of other things to chime in. So I'll do that, but I'd like, I'd like to get Amy and April also.
Sure. I understand the constraints that Patty is talking about. I share some of the concerns that I've heard about the quality of students' education suffering. But I continue to think that the hybrid model is the best balance of some of the competing constraints that we have to operate under in a global pandemic, which, you know, is new for all of our lifetimes. I am fine revisiting it once a month. I would also be fine adopting hybrid for a six to eight-week period. The numbers of cases in New Hampshire are concerning, not reassuring. And I recognize the time and effort and educational expertise that the principals and administration and teachers and everybody has put into the recommendation that Patty, that Patty is setting forth tonight. And I, I would be in favor of that. And I think we should talk about the flex day separately.
Thank you. April?
Thank you. This is April. So I would support us pushing out the review date to one month as well, instead of every two weeks. I think that would help our families as well as our staff. And as far as, there was something that was said about lunches and trying to keep students apart at PA in the cafeteria. And I would like to hear, since we're talking about the hybrid model, more about why decisions have been made for the students to have lunch in the cafeteria versus classroom meals as, I know classroom meals, that was something that was mentioned in the guidance that we did receive from the state. So at this point, I just saw some news that we have gone, instead of minimal level, we're now at moderate. And I really want to commend everyone for working hard, trying to keep people in place. But we need to prove that we can be effective at what we're doing. But I think part of doing the hybrid could be we are increasing the amount of time that children are there. And I do think that would be helpful to talk about either now or later because that is part of the hybrid model. I'd like to see us talk about when are we going to start expanding options for our kiddos? Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Morris, do you want to address the lunch question?
Yeah, I can do that. So, you know, cohort model is a lot easier to pull off in a self-contained, like, for instance, in elementary school, my daughter goes to Hill and she's around like the same eight kids all day. At a high school, that's very different. And so that was part of the decision-making process when we looked at lunches and the cafeteria. So for instance, if a student were to grab their lunch from the cafeteria and go back and eat in their classroom that they would have during that lunchtime, they would be sitting at a desk that, you know, three other students have sat at during that day. And so from a hygienic standpoint, not to mention the high-touch surfaces that, you know, they're going to come across on their way back from the cafeteria, those were all considerations in thinking that, you know, it made more sense from a hygienic standpoint for them to eat, eat lunch in the cafeteria. Not to mention that it, it allows us, the administrators, the custodial staff, to clean those surfaces in the cafeteria in between each of our three lunches. And that's far more difficult to do that with any kind of fidelity in classroom service building.
Thank you. So I'll share a very brief synopsis of the conversation I had with Gene earlier with his permission, and I will not editorialize. But basically, Gene is, shared that he is kind of personally a little bit more cavalier in the nature of his work. He does not always wear a mask. He doesn't always feel it's necessary. But that his overall feelings are that he has a responsibility as a board member to be more cautious with the children and the staff in our district than with his own personal choices. And that he feels that the hybrid model is the way forward right now. He also just sent me a text message as he let me know that he had to sign off the meeting. So I'll read that. He said, I asked him if, I said, would you be okay with me sharing our conversation from earlier? And he said, yes. And he added, I'd like to revisit the question next meeting to see what the trend is. I'm also concerned that we may not get into budget soon enough, given the route we've been taking concerning COVID. I'm not entirely sure what he means there, but I'll, I'll leave that statement on its own. I'll take a minute and, and let people know where I stand, I suppose. I guess one thing that I would say is I want to stress that, at least for my part, and I, and I believe everybody else, when you keep, when the public keeps hearing the statement, you know, we really do want your kids in the building, I, I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't truly mean that. The suggestion really that anybody on the school board or the administration would be somehow politically motivated to make a decision one way or the other, I find ludicrous. We, the school board members do get a small stipend. It's next to nothing. We aren't controlled by super PACs. We, we don't, we don't get kickbacks if we make decisions in a certain direction. I think, you know, the five of us- you know, the five of us disagree sometimes, but I do believe that all five of us are here because we have a genuine care for this community and for the school and the teachers and the staff and the children. So I just want to put to bed any notion that anybody on this board is doing anything in a malicious manner. Personally, as Jean shared with me earlier, I feel that regardless of what I do in my personal life or choices that I make for my own children, that I have a responsibility to treat everybody else's children with the utmost caution and care. The cases are going up. We are seeing cases in our schools, in the schools in our SAU, in our staff members. I feel like COVID is here. I don't think it's going to get better quickly, especially with cold and flu season. One report that I read some months ago, was it the reason that it was hitting so hard in the South then, instead of here, was particularly because it was summertime. And in the summertime in New England, everybody's outside. And in the summertime in Florida, everybody's inside. And when you're inside, obviously, you share germs more. And we're getting to the point now in the seasons where we're going to all be inside and sharing our germs rather than outside. It wouldn't shock me to see these numbers continue to rise. I'm not a doctor. I don't pretend to be. I go with what I see. And I'm, I'm seeing reports in our schools, in our SAU, of this virus being here. Luckily, it has not caused a super spreader event or any kind of outbreak. I don't have any confidence that if we were back in school full time, that that would be the case. We are taking every precaution that we can, and we're still seeing cases. It's my personal feeling that if we were not taking those, that level of precaution, we would be seeing many more cases. And I don't have any interest in being responsible for for voting for anything that caused more people to get sick. So that's my personal take. I'm happy with moving to a one-month review or even maybe more. I think that's fair, like April said, to not just the staff, but also to our families. They have to plan for childcare and for how they're getting their school day done. And I think it's fair to to give people a decent chunk of time to be able to plan for that. So I'm all in favor of making this decision process, you know, more, more spread out steps, I suppose. So I just wanted to throw that out there as my opinion, so everybody's clear on where I stand. And I suppose we need some sort of action.
Excuse me, Andy, this is Ann. First of all, we can't take a vote tonight. We don't have a full number of staff, of board members. So with just four of us, it could be a tie. Second of all, I don't feel comfortable going out a month, because what if things get great? And kids could have been back into school. And now we just lost potentially two weeks of getting the children back in school if things take a turn for the better. So I'm not feel, I don't feel comfortable going out a month. And I don't think that we could really make a vote this evening. We don't have all of our members here.
So we can do a vote. It's, it could be a tie. And if it is, I believe the motion to, for a motion to carry, you have to have a majority. So I believe with a tie, any motion would fail.
But is it fair to Jean for us to not have him included in the vote?
I mean, that's up to Jean, and he had a personal matter. And I'm completely fine with his decision to step out. But I don't think that we can not make a decision for two weeks or more. I mean, the rules are that if you have a quorum, you can take votes. And I intend to abide by those rules.
Exactly. You can. But I just thought to be considerate to have all of our staff.
No, I hear you. And I, I, I agree. But I think we have to put some sort of action here.
The second thing I want to mention is that our, that our matrix, there isn't one county in the whole United States that has less than one case per hundred thousand. When I was looking at this and voted yes on this matrix, I didn't realize Merrimack County only has a hundred and fifty-one residents, a hundred and fifty-one thousand residents. So we're never, on this matrix, we will never get back full in.
I could be wrong. I'd like to hear what the other board members have to say. And what Patty's understanding is, I suppose, but I, I think that this matrix is a guidance document, and it's not, I mean, we still have the final say as the board. I think that this is so that every meeting, we can be presented with information. And it is possible, we are well within our rights, if everything else was moving over towards or was in the green, but there was still three cases in Merrimack County, we can go ahead and open the schools. This is not a hard and fast, every single thing has to be fully green for us to do. This is a, a document to give us a full picture of what the situation looks like, so that we can make informed decisions. At least, that's my understanding.
Appreciate you quite clear. This resident had a question. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Amy, go ahead.
This is a guidance document for us as a board, so that we could organize ourselves and have a set of information and updates every, every meeting from the administration. So we, our records are clear that this is just a guidance document. This is not a strict, you know, test where we have to meet all of these things. I would like to make a motion, but I just need to fill in the blank for what is the day that our current motion carries us to? I can't remember if it's October fourteenth or fifteenth.
Oh, I have to look at a calendar.
I had October fourteenth.
Yes, according to the minutes, I do believe it was October fourteenth.
Thank you.
Then I would like to make a motion to accept the recommendation to continue in the hybrid model, and that we would continue through Friday, November thirteenth.
Okay.
That we would revisit at our November school board meeting.
Andy, I'm sorry, I, could you repeat the dates that Amy said? I didn't hear.
So she's, I, could you do it, Amy? I'm sorry.
That we would continue hybrid through Friday, November thirteenth, and that we would revisit at the November board meeting. And I'm not putting a date on the November board meeting because I know that it may or may not be in flux. And so just whatever we meet in November, we'll reconsider.
So if we have a meeting November fifth, we may consider at that meeting?
Right. But we wouldn't, the model of instruction would not change on the ninth or the seventh, you know, it would change starting on, if it were to change, it would change starting on Monday, November sixteenth.
Thank you.
Do you mind? I think, didn't our MOU say that we were going to give two weeks notice? I'm thinking.
If it did, then we should follow that.
I think, I'm pretty sure. So I was just pointing that out for the dates. It could start that Monday.
Okay. So then, it would, it would be no sooner than Monday, November sixteenth, that the model would change, but it could be after that.
Okay. I will second that. So we need to check for more discussion. Excuse me.
This is April. I'm just looking at the school discussion. I'm all tongue tied tonight. The school calendar. And I noticed that the thirteenth is just one week shy of the last full week before the Thanksgiving break. And I'd like to hear from Amy, since she made the motion, more about why the thirteenth instead of the twentieth. Thank you.
My inclination would have been to go longer, to go through that break, and maybe even the week after that break. But I hear Ann's point that as a matter of courtesy, it might be courteous to have Jean participate in this discussion making. So I'm trying to thread the needle here between, I hear Patty saying, let's have these time chunks be at least a month. I have my personal belief that we should go, you know, longer than a month, and then the desire to have Jean participate. So I put all that together, and that's how I decided it.
Thank you.
Andy, can I just throw it out there? November fifth is not a budget meeting.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion around Amy's motion before we call a vote? Okay, so a motion to extend hybrid learning to be re-discussed at our first November meeting, approximate date, November fifth, with the actual model change to happen no earlier than November sixteenth. Is that correct? Did I get all that right? All right. And a reminder, if we do have a tie, the motion will fail. I'm not sure where that lives, leaves us, because we don't have a decision currently, after our current one expires. But anyway, Amy, yeah, Amy, sorry, forgot who left.
I know you have a lot of As on your list.
Ann?
No.
And April?
No, because I would like to see that time period be a little bit longer and give us at least a two-week buffer between our next meeting and the end of the hybrid being extended. Thank you.
And I'm yes. So we do have a tie. So we do not have a majority. So that, that particular motion fails.
Okay, so April, you're saying that you'd like the time period to go through to, hold on here, I just slipped the wrong way in my calendar. November twenty-seventh?
So the thirtieth would be the first Monday back after Thanksgiving break.
I'm amenable, April, to going to Friday, November twentieth, or Friday, November twenty-seventh. And I know that going to Friday, November twenty-seventh is really just kind of going to Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, because the rest, the remainder of that week is middle school.
April, I'm not sure if you're talking, but you're muted.
I am speaking. Thank you. This is April. I'd like to make a motion that we extend hybrid learning in Pembroke School District until November twenty-seventh of 2020.
This is Amy. I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
This is Ann. I think that is just way too long. Anything could happen in that amount of time. This is over, that's over a month.
April, can you repeat that date?
November twenty-seventh. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'm, this is just April. I would just restate that I'm really concerned about making sure that we've given our families enough notice, that we give ourselves enough time to prove that our model can be successful so that we can extend. I'm up for if this needs to be reconsidered at some point. But I think that to let our families know what to anticipate for the next coming weeks, that it's the prudent thing to do.
Any other discussion?
Andy, I'm sorry, can I get those dates again? So we're looking now out to November twentieth?
Twenty-seven.
November twenty-seventh? Well, we don't have school the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, or twenty-seventh. So basically, this goes to the twenty-fourth.
Correct.
Okay, so if we go out to the twenty-fourth, we have about nine school days potentially till Christmas Vacation. So we really can, we're really shortening the education time that these children are able to get. And I did not count the Mondays. So I will not be able to vote yes.
Okay, other discussion? All right, then on a roll call vote, a motion to extend remote learning to November twenty-seven. Try to go the other way this time. April?
Yes.
Ann?
No.
Amy?
Yeah.
And I'm yes. So that'll be the plan for now. As April mentioned, anybody in the majority of that previous vote can make a motion to reconsider. And certainly, if, if, if we're all blessed with, with this thing kind of clearing up, that would be awesome. And I would certainly be, certainly be amenable to reconsidering, too. I am sensitive. I think April had a good point about giving our families time to plan. But I think Ann's right as well. If something happens and we can get these guys back into school, I would love to do so. Thanks, everybody, for that discussion. Is, I guess I would ask Patty, is there anything else that you would want to add to that discussion?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Andy, excuse me, are we going to discuss adding Monday as a cohort day in school for K to twelve?
I, I guess we can certainly discuss it. I don't, I don't think that's like a actionable thing. I think that's something that we would ask our headmaster and our superintendent to take a look at and let us know if it's something that is doable or not. But we can certainly have a conversation about it.
Andy, this is Amy. I, I think we need to move along in the meeting. But I think we do have at least a majority of us being at least Ann, you, and me, who have expressed interest in doing what you just said, which is asking the superintendent and the administrators to see if they can come up with a plan to make instruction, make Monday as an instructional day work. I would like to hear back from them after we give them time to think it over.
So Dan and Patty, could you bring us kind of a general feasibility and impacts for that for our next meeting?
Yep, we can do that. I'll put it on the agenda.
Excellent, because I'll forget.
Andy, can I just throw out there? I don't know, obviously, we're not going to discuss it this evening. But we have a lot of children who cannot read. So is there anything, pleasure of the board, is that they would at least think about bringing a couple of grades in full time? We have a lot of students who are struggling, and they just can't read. So I know we had a discussion about the high schools because of the area agreement, and they want more time in. Are we thinking about these children who can't read, and we're putting them in front of a computer to be able to be successful?
I, I think that, don't believe that fits under a current agenda item. I don't want to sound like I'm making light of it. But we do have more stuff that we need to move on. Can we ask, I guess I don't know, I don't know how to phrase this, Patty, so that we can get an update on this next time. I don't know if this falls under special ed stuff. I want, I'm going to ask for information about this without doing anything I shouldn't be doing.
I think, I just want to clarify what Ann is saying. So when you say there are students that can't read, you're not talking about struggling students. You're talking about, like, our kindergarten who aren't yet readers. Is that right?
Exactly. Kindergarten, afraid. We do hear from quite a few, quite a few residents that their child can't even read yet, but we're putting them in front of a computer. You know, hopefully, a parent is maybe able to there and assist them. But if, I would like the pleasure of the board, I know we can't discuss it this evening, but put it on the agenda to even think about bringing back just a couple of grades.
And this is, or Andy, this is April, since I should address our chair. I would support that because moving along, I definitely would like more information on how do we move forward to get our students and our staff more time in the classroom, learning traditionally. So I think it's, as we continue this model, I would like to see us, even if it's just a little bit, moving forward in baby steps, so that we can make sure that our kids are back full, and help our younger kids learn to read. It is hard to do those things on a computer. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll put that on the agenda for next time around. I'd also encourage, if there are particular families in this circumstance that have reached out, please make sure that you've also reached out to the teacher and the principal. And if, if you've done that, and you're not getting what you feel is an appropriate response, please reach out to Patty. And if you are still not getting what you think is an appropriate response, please shoot me an email, and we can figure out when we can discuss this, either in public or non-public. But make sure that, that you're sending these questions to the school and giving them a chance to answer them as well. Everybody okay with moving on?
Andy, this is just April. I just want to clarify. It, it sounds a bit ableist to say is that a child who needs special education, you don't have to have a disability to need help learning to read. So I'd just like to make sure that that applies to any student, not just a child with a disability.
Yep, absolutely.
Correct? Thank you.
Yep. Yep. So, um, agenda item four, C, board reports. Um, so Anne, I think you're up for, um, well, let's see, SA, SAU Board, SAU Exec Board, can't remember if there was one of those.
Yes, thank you, um, we had a um, a meeting last week or or prior, and we were discussing the budget. Hmm, and Patty, can you just let me know for the fund budgets, two, five and seven? That is only if um Pepper is utilizing those services, is that correct?
Um, almost, fund one is the SAU budget, so the other, the funds that are just by use are the two, four and seven.
Okay, so on the um parts that we got from Amber is the SAU budget had up point sixteen percent. Fund one is up sixteen point five percent. Um, fund two is two point seventeen, fund five is four point eight six, and fund seven is three point four nine. Um, and thank you Patty for for clarifying that fund two, five and seven is only utili- uh, charged for utilization. But the discussion we had is concerning the budget and the raises that we're looking at. And again Patty, can you correct me that the budget, the last one that Amber passed out? Did not include the raises, or it did on the twenty third of September?
Amber is on here, so I'm hoping she has a good memory and can help us out with that.
Hi, sorry. Um, the the last board meeting that we had had some increases in it. But not full increases in it, so we had, the board had previously had, the meeting prior had um determined a group of um staff members. In what their increases would be, but there were still members, um, staff members that had not been decided. So at that meeting, at this last meeting that you just had, that was finalized and will be brought forth to the full board.
But the numbers that were finalized don't include any, uh, some of some of those raises, is that correct? So on the next.
No. Well, no, I think the board voted on, from my understanding, it was the exec board voted on. The bottom line being inclusive of all increases that were discussed.
Okay, so the.
Those, those would then be brought forth to the full board.
Okay, so the proposed budget changes, they're looking for one point, uh, one million, seven hundred and twenty nine dollars and three hundred and ninety, is that correct?
So the number that is going before the full board. Is one million, seven hundred and sixty three thousand, nine seventy three.
Thank you, and what percentage increase?
Two point one seven.
Thank you, um, and we also had discussion concerning um the line that I was concerned about, and it has come up in residents prior. Is telephone line, um, it's eighty seven thou- uh, eight thousand, seven hundred and forty nine. Of which that five thousand, four hundred is just the cellphone stipends. So we had a discussion, I've asked um to revisit it, not to take away the cellphones, but revisit it to a business organization run. Um, cellphone which the, the employees would receive a second phone. Um, it was shut down because they felt that it wasn't enough of a savings to even go back and have Amber research that. So the question I brought up too is that if this meeting, um, this information is going to be going on to the next full born. And I believe that's on ten fourteen, then we have a public hearing on ten twenty eight. I asked the school, the executive board if any questions or any concerns that were brought up from any resident. Or any other member of the full SAU board would be something that they would consider because they are adamant that this is the budget they're passing. So our next meeting is uh ten fourteen. And we're all invited.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, brings us to AREA committee report, so I was there, but I'm not on the committee, so I'll let, I'll let Anne and Amy chime in on this one.
And Amy gets the winner, right, so Amy, do you mind?
You're still muted, Amy, oh there you go.
No, I don't mind at all, is what I was saying. Um, okay, so I thought it was really interesting and I'm going to share this, it might be a little time consuming, but I'm going to go through it quickly. Um, all of the school boards went around the status of where their schools are at. And so this is a little bit dated now because it's from nine twenty nine. Uh, so EPSOM is in full time, full attending school. Uh, they have one grade on remote until October tenth because of. I'm not clear if it's a diagnosed case of COVID or a quarantine situation, but some sort of COVID situation. Uh, they're using three feet spacing and masks are on. And they have twenty five people who have opted to go fully remote. And all of those twenty five people are um taught by one teacher. In Allentown, they have hybrid, it's a three-two schedule, so it's different than what we're doing, um, there's no flex day. Uh, if anyone wanted to go all remote in Allentown, you had to go through V-Lax, but um some reported that V-Lax is having some significant problems. Uh, Chi Chester is hybrid for the month of October, they will discuss at the meeting on the nineteenth, October nineteenth. They thought the Pembroke matrix was too strict, they looked at the Department of Health and Human Services matrix and thought that was more reasonable. They have about twenty students who have opted to go fully remote. Um, I guess I didn't take a note of who and how those twenty students were getting taught. Um, and then I reported on what the status was with Pembroke. Um, moving forward, uh, there were some mixed feelings, but uh, one thing was very strong. The AREA uh committee members were not generally interested in going to a fully remote schedule. Um, there were some mixed feelings about whether we should go to a fully in-person schedule or continue with hybrid. And I would characterize the majority opinion there as wanting to stick with hybrid. But wanting to change the Monday flex days at Pembroke Academy to an instructional day. And either remote, in person, you know, there, that really wasn't a strong impetus there, it was that it would be an instructional day. I already touched on the fact earlier that they really want to be more in the loop on big discussions that affect Pembroke Academy. And I think we are improving our um. Our achievement of that, and I think we still have some room for improvement in that, so there you go.
Great, thank you, um. I'm not sure how communication works with that committee, but if you, um, I I suppose you could inform them of our. Requests for feasibility as far as the Monday thing, um, just, you know, so they know that we listened and that that it's in the works and we'll have something to talk about.
So, um, I believe that one of the things we talked about last meeting, let me just look here. Um, Patty, can, could you confirm for me, I thought we talked about circulating the minutes from these board meetings to all the other boards. As one of the mechanisms for that communication.
Yeah, and we.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, um, yeah, we, and we talked about Peter and I um communicating anything that came out of the Pembroke Board meeting that he should take back to his boards too. So he, we touched base today to talk about what was on the agenda for tonight, and then tomorrow, if if we're both in at the same time. At once, we'll have a conversation about what happened tonight too.
Great.
Um, I should also just add that at the next AREA meeting, uh, which, I don't have the date handy for, but I will dig that up. And um, jump in when I have that, we're going to be um really starting in earnest. The discussion of whether and how to open up the AREA agreement to revise it. There's even talk of like, you know, should we consider scrapping AREA arrangement and going to a co-op or something totally different? Um, so that exploration is really going to start in earnest at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Um, Andy, can I just add, um, the meeting for the next area agreement is November tenth? Um, and I wasn't sure if I heard Amy, but the other um districts have asked. What the unenrollment numbers are for Pembroke Academy? That they're not even doing V-Lax. So I just didn't know if you want to just include that in the principal's report.
Um, actually, in particular, uh, what they were looking for is Amber, the um really awesome enrollment update that you prepare. If there could be a column added for unenrolled. So like, there's a thing that we don't see on those numbers, which is the students that, you know. Might have been here had there not been a global pandemic, so completely unenrolled, you know. Not doing V-Lax, uh, not doing remote through Pembroke School District.
I think we talked about that that was a number that we could get probably from the registrar, I think, Dan, and and could get that updated for them. Probably pretty easily, because if we don't get a request from another school, then we can assume the students unenrolled.
Great. Um. Budget Committee, uh, we haven't met since the last time that we met, um, there's a little bit of a break now as. People finalize things in in other departments. The town is going through department by department to review the budgets. Um, our budget, you know, they're al- always requesting as much detail as they can possibly get with the understanding that they know that. And that it'll get to them in time, but you know, that's just a little more of a nervous feeling this year, understandably so, of kind of what the outlook is for next year. David Jordan's report for uh revenue for the town was actually fairly encouraging, the 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 deficit, I guess, for what we. What what the town thought they were going to get and what they actually got with vehicle registrations and things like that. Is, has not been hit as drastically as um originally predicted, but there is still some concern that that, that that could. Um, roll over or even get worse in the next year. Um, so everybody's a little on edge and and would like as much detail we can provide as early as we can provide. Um, but they also understand kind of how the process works. So, and then most of last meeting was actually taken up with the CIP presentation, um, which we got a taste of tonight. But Jerry went through all the different departments and talked about how the committee handled their business and how, wha- how and why they voted on the the items that they did. Um, I'd encourage any, anybody that's listening to take a look at the CIP report. Um, it's, it's interesting reading and it really gives you an idea of, you know, some of the money that goes on in the town and and where it is spent and why. Want to become more informed, that's a wonderful place to start.
Um, Andy, can, and the budget committee meeting is the fifteenth of October. And then you, on that date, you will have your schedule of what the meeting dates are.
Okay, thank you. Uh, pace report is Mr. Gauss, and he's not with us, um, I don't think there's been a pace meeting, but is, does anybody else attend a pace meeting that I'm not aware of? Nope, okay, um, Hill renovation committee, I just saw, Kevin just miraculously came up to the top of my screen here, so. I'll turn it over to Kevin Fosse to give us an update.
Um, thank you, Andy, uh, we did not meet in September. Um, most of our members just needed to not have that on their plate with the start of school. Um, we are meeting tomorrow and we are in the wind down process, I am uh waiting on some special ed statistical information that I. Honestly just requested from Ms. Gersha, um, and we still would like to meet with uh Ms. Gary and. Um, probably, I'll let her make the call, but she may want to include her assistant principal, Ms. LaCass. Also just for um some consistency so that we can um regroup her on where we are in the process, the conversations we've had in the past. Prior to her arrival in the Pembroke School District. And uh make sure that uh we're all on the same page there with with the ongoing needs of that building. To uh include in our recommendations, so I will keep you guys posted, but tomorrow night, six o'clock in the gym at Hill.
Awesome, thank you very much. And that brings us to our principal reports, um, I'm not going to pretend to know where I started last time, so let's start with Hill this time.
I was laughing and saying, Mr. Marston gets out of starting first every time.
He always does, yeah.
He does, so somewhere down the road, he gets to, I'll take it this time, but I think, um, no, just kidding. Um, so it's been really great, I think we're on three weeks now of having the kids in, um. On our Mondays as a staff, we all sit down and Miss LaCass and I, we meet with every team in the building. Really to get a pulse, to talk to our staff, and we gained a lot of feedback. Um, as far as, you know, where everybody was and things that we could do um to support them and things like that. Um, overwhelmingly, we got the um, everyone settling into a routine, they feel like things are, we have the buzzword in our building is manageable. Um, you know, we really are trying to make sure that what we're, what we're doing, we can sustain it. Um, and that we can now move into digging a little even deeper into how to provide, um, you know, different activities and things like that, that are, that are more rigorous or or. Kind of benefit, um, those asynchronous days a little bit more. So overall, we did have that general feeling of the hybrid was was working and um. I think everyone will feel a little bit more at ease that they can um kind of perfect what they've been working on right now. Um, in Seesaw, it's fun because I get to see, it gives me statistics, and so just some fun statistics to throw out there in the last seven days. Um, teachers have posted two thousand, seven hundred and twenty two posts. They've provided over a thousand comments and checked an additional one thousand, one hundred student responses. Um, so it's pretty amazing to see all the work that they're putting in um to uh those asynchronous thing uh days. Um, our fully remote teachers are starting to really look into planning for meaningful assessments and how to administer them remotely. That's some of the work that we want to do kind of moving forward. Um, working, uh, we're currently really working on our attendance policies. Uh, we want to make sure that we can assist students um that are maybe not being able to get on during their asynchronous days. Um, really seeing what we can do to provide that support. Um, our health screenings right now, we're getting about sixty percent completion of our convenient MD from families, so we're going to be working on. Maybe notifying everybody to um get on and make sure that they can do that health screening, it really has, one of. I think that has been extremely beneficial is, um, and we're very thankful to parents that are being diligent with the health screenings. And contacting us because I, you know, really right now, uh, we've kind of uh shied away or not had to quarantine. Some areas or some classes because of parents being diligent, and for that, we're absolutely thankful, so we would love to see that continue. Um, so we're going to communicate that out a little bit more. Another fun thing, normal is picture days coming up, October fourteenth and fifteenth, um. So that we have each cohort day and then students who are remote, um, we're gonna uh have you come in, or if the parents are able to bring them in. Between noon and one thirty, they'll drive up just into our normal drop off. Um, and the kiddo can get out, uh, hop into the gym, take their picture real quick in and out. Um, so we're excited for that, those little normal things are important for all of us to make sure you could still, um. Take care of that, and I think that's kind of all that's right and I have for you right now.
Awesome, thanks, I think we'll go through um all three of you and then we'll we'll do questions at the end, so, Mr. Marston, uh, take it away.
Hi, everybody. Um, not unlike what Wendy was talking about, there's been a lot of um hard work going on trying to frankly figure out this hybrid model itself. Um, the students that, uh, I have to really shout out to the kids, because when they're in the building, they're doing an incredible job of. Uh, wearing masks and social distancing, um, I've been actually pleasantly surprised at how well that's gone. Uh, it it's also proving a, um. I don't know if it's a theory or just an idea, that smaller classes uh create better education, and uh there is absolutely no question, you can see. Here in the building is is significantly lower, uh, students are uh much more engaged when they're in the classroom. And teachers are obviously able to attend to those kids much quicker. Um, so the hope as we continue to go that we're going to see um the pace quicken somewhat. Um, with the um kids that are in person. Uh, we we do have a challenge with uh remote learning and without going into a whole mess of detail. Um, I guess the best way to compare it is is to school board meetings. Um, when we have a school board meeting that typically takes two hours and it takes us uh three or four hours, it's not unlike that in school. We have technology issues, we have kids that um. I will log on and say that they're there and we call on them and they're not there. Um, so we have a a number of things that that we're trying to work through and to make sure that that remote option that kids are choosing. is actually the option that's going to work best for them. And, and, and as we go, we're trying to come up with a way to make sure that those kids are getting what they need. Have to shout out to our, all school nurses across the state, specifically to our district, but even more specifically to April Barker, our school nurse. This is something that I joke all the time because I'm spending more time as a school nurse this year than I think I have in my prior X amount of years and I can tell you how many years I've been in it. But for somebody that has never worked in a school before, but has tremendous credentials as a nurse, she's doing a tremendous job and we certainly are not able to make it day to day without her support. And good spirits, by the way. Our soccer and cross country teams are up and running and it's been exciting to watch kids. That brings some normalcy. We all knew it would and that certainly is very beneficial to see the kids. Fans have been great, they've been wearing masks and they've been trying to social distance, but they are doing a nice job at all of our games. I would say the same thing that Wendy said. We're at a point where we're feeling, we're beginning to manage what we have and we're really trying to look at those, what we're calling independent workdays and that flex day to see, not unlike what the board was talking about, trying to improve those. To give you an example of some of the issues we're having on the independent days, I'm not going to tell you what grade level, but we had over 40 kids not turn in any, any homework or any work on those independent days. So I hear from parents that there's not enough work. At the same time, what we see is kids not turning in anything. So sometimes kids will turn in, they'll, they'll hit submit, but the actually document is completely blank. So those are some things that we need to work on. And it just takes time to go through all those, because you know, there's, there's a lot that goes with it. So, so we're working very hard to make sure that we thread the needle on how much work we give, not to overload, but enough to make sure that those days are worthwhile for student learning. Attendance has been quite an animal to work on and to maintain. And we're, we're still working through those issues and I won't go into how lengthy that is, but attendance is more than a daily struggle. Also, our daily schedule is also changing pretty regularly. Somebody wants to come from hybrid and go to remote, somebody wants to go from remote to hybrid and trying to balance all that has been quite a challenge. However, the last week or so, beginning to feel that all those things to be able to level out and hopefully it'll give us an opportunity to get better at what we're doing. And that's the goal for everybody. I think that is about it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marston. I'm sorry, Mr. Morris.
Okay, thank you. So a couple of areas I just want to highlight, communication. We continue to emphasize the use of digital communication with our stakeholders to disseminate information, whether that be in videos or we had our new fall edition of the Pembroke Academy newsletter and a host of One Call Nows. And we're trying to, we're trying to do that judiciously. We know that there is a ton of communication going out from every school right now. And so, you know, trying to strike a balance between being communicative, but not inundating people too much. And, and sometimes it's hard to strike that balance. In terms of instruction, you know, we have continued with our hybrid model. We've been able to, you know, institute or maintain fidelity to social distancing in classes and in lunch, although as I mentioned earlier, we're at capacity in the cafeteria in some of our lunches. In another area that we really anticipated issues was congestion in the hallways. And we've been able to access some exterior doors that are supervised by administrators during passing time. And that has really helped in one particular area where the academic wing attaches to the cafeteria and we've been able to really clean that up, which has been very helpful. We, in terms of safety, we have done four fire drills in the past few weeks and the building's been able to be completely evacuated in under two and a half minutes for each of those drills. And we did those on a green day cohort A, a green day cohort B, a white day cohort A and a white day cohort B. So that would experience. And then just talking about the student experience, you know, and I'll echo what John said. Exceptionally proud of how seriously and I guess professionally, the students have really handled the use of face coverings and social distancing. Sure, we have to remind students, but there, it's always something that they've forgotten and it's not a debate. They've really done a nice job. I also echo what John said regarding nurses. Our nurses in our nurses' aid have worked incredibly hard. And our teachers and paraprofessionals, our custodial services, everyone in the building is really trying to do the best they can. And just echo another thing John said, attendance is really difficult in this model, you know, in a, we want to try to hold more accountability with asynchronous model. But with that means that there's accountability in this model and sometimes that can be difficult. We're trying to strike balance too, but it is very difficult.
Thank you. All right. Questions for our principals?
Andy, this is Ann. I just had a question for Pembroke Academy. We had a teacher on this evening saying that she livestreams her class. Some of the districts in the area agreement meeting were asking for live stream. Is that something that just this teacher is doing or other teachers at PA?
There are other teachers that are doing it. I, I can't say that they're doing it for every lesson. There are certain lessons that lend themselves better to live streaming than others. I would also say the breakdown of the class roster can lend itself better to live streaming than others. For instance, if I have, you know, let's say 10 students that have a live stream in and I have another 10 students in the room that are pretty rowdy and on top of instructing and the content, delivering the content, I also need to monitor, you know, face coverings and social distancing, you know, sometimes that can be challenging. So I think it's not a uniform thing that every teacher's doing it or that the teachers that are doing it are doing it every day, but it is certainly a tool in the toolbox that teachers have been using.
Do we have an issue with the children in the student, in the classroom being exposed to that live stream?
No, the, the teachers that are live streaming have a Chromebook or another device that is focused on them. So that hasn't been an issue. What has been emphasized to parents and students and staff is the Rubicon that we can't cross is recording. So we can livestream, but we cannot record without consent from either party.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Andy, I did have another question. Mr. Marston was discussing free lunches. Is that for all students?
I'm sorry, Ann, was that free lunches?
Yes.
Yeah, it's free lunches until some more time in December. I don't have a specific date or until the money runs out.
Okay. So what would be the situation if the parents are still sending the money in? Is it just being held for when the free lunches run out in their account?
That's a great question. I'm not sure anybody's sending any money in though.
Okay.
Anybody sending money in?
Are we staying for lunches? The last question I have is, Wendy Hill was talking about temperature checks. So the parents right now are doing all of the temperature checks. So when they get to school, that the information is already on convenient MD app. Is that correct?
We, we temperature check every kiddo that comes. It's our secondary screening. So part of the first screening is the parents with the temperature check, but do it again when they get to the.
Thank you very much. That's all I had, Andy. Thank you.
Others? Well, it looks like Mr. Marston's talking, but I think he's muted.
Yeah, I just, I was doing the opposite. And just to answer your question further, there is some online, there's no cash being handed back and forth, but there could be online families paying for their lunches.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I, I can speak for me, Ann. Not that it means much, but I never send the money for my kids until I start getting the emails from the automated system that says, hey, they only have 10 bucks left. And I, I guess if everybody's getting free lunches, they're not getting the emails, so.
It's a wonderful benefit for all the students. So I just want to say thank you for being able to get that task done to all of the principals. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks. I mean, it's late, so I'm not in the business of mincing words anymore. I'm too tired. You guys are in a horrible situation managing education in this setting and you're all doing beautifully. Nobody's perfect. We so appreciate all of your work. Thank you.
April?
I want to say thank you to all the staff and also to all the families out there too, who are working to get our students to school because we have families who are risking a lot. I really want to give a big shout out to our nurses who are working so hard to make sure that everyone stays healthy. And I basically want to say thank you for what you're all doing during this incredibly unknown time and as we're making it through. So thank you. Please keep up the good work.
Yep, and I'll just echo everything that they just said. So with that, we will move on to agenda item number two, actually. So we have some minutes to approve. September 1st is on the docket. Do we have discussion around, well, do we want to motion first and then we can discuss?
Amy will move to approve the September 1 board meeting minutes as proposed.
This is April. I actually have some corrections to the September 1 minutes. On page three, last paragraph, it states, Mrs. Valani asked if we, if it would be a straw poll to define what area, what the area includes. That was not me. I believe that may have been Ann. Ann, do you remember asking for a straw poll about the area in the proposed matrix?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so that was you?
Yes.
Okay, and then on page four, third paragraph, it says, "Miss Valani, a footnote for switching from hybrid will depend on the readiness of all of the facilities by 9:14 2020." I would love to take credit for that, but I do believe that that was our Amy Manzeli because I thought that was a wonderful idea. Also was not me. I do believe that was Amy.
I think that that's right. Good catches.
Sandy's giving the thumbs up. Any other discussion on September 1?
Well, with that, I would just ask, would?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure nobody else has any other revisions. And then I'd like to amend my motion to say as amended during tonight's meeting.
Sure, and just before we get there and before a motion is made, I have something for the 15th. Thank you.
Any others on the first? All right, Amy, do you want to do a redo?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the minutes of September 1 as amended at this meeting tonight.
Okay, and Ann, are you still okay with a second?
Yes.
Awesome, then on a roll call vote, I'll do April.
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm yes, thank you very much. September 15th.
And we have a discussion before any motions possibly?
Yeah, I guess we'll do that so we don't.
A little informally, sure, to save some time. So this is April on page eight of the 9:15 draft minutes. Third paragraph, it says, "Miss Valani was the district negligent in getting information." That was in conversation about the contract with Dale and the district getting information. That was not me. I do believe that was Ann. Ann, do you remember asking that?
I'm sorry, what page was that again?
It's page eight. And then Amber answered. I thought that was a great question, so I know that wasn't me either. And Amber had a wonderful response, so.
Yes, yes, it is me. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only thing that I have for 9:15.
All right, anybody else on the September 15th minutes?
I do not.
Amy, I'll set.
Do I make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the September 15th meeting minutes as amended tonight.
This is Ann. I'll second.
All right, on a roll call vote, Amy?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Motion carries. So then we can move from two to five. Policy review.
Andy, this is Ann. Can I just do a shout out to Sandy? That when we send amendments to her in writing, they get done quickly. So I, I just want to say thank you to Sandy that her work is being noticed. Thank you.
She's the best. Okay, so policy review, we've got a whole pile of them here. Does anybody have anything, I know April, you had asked specifically about one of these being on the agenda. Do you want to address that now?
So I did ask about a particular policy being on the agenda because it's not in compliance with a technical assistance that went out. And that's IHBG Home Education Instruction. However, I personally think that it's, I know we have a long list of policies. I'd like to find out from our superintendent, are any of these really pressing? And if not, I would like to advocate that we wait. Do we have a full board with Jean? Because there's a lot that we profit when everyone's involved in these conversations. So if none are really pressing to get done tonight, I would like to ask that we wait on Jean to take up any policies.
Patty, is there anything that you need from us soon?
Thank you, April. There's actually a couple of policies that we're still soliciting feedback on that I don't have. So it would actually benefit everyone if we have a little bit more time. So I think all of them can wait and I appreciate that.
Great, thank you. I'm okay with that. And Amy, are you guys okay with that?
Andy, this is Ann. I'm okay with that, but the facility use, I sent that on 9:15, but I'm not sure if anybody got my updates on that.
You sent, you sent updates or just a request to have it on the agenda?
Updates.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a note to double check. Sandy, did you get updates or proposed updates on KF?
I think, and are they in the drive? Did Kathy add them in? She usually does.
No, nothing, nothing was changed on the documents. So I thought maybe no one got the email.
Okay, I'll double check on that. Thanks.
I'll check too. I don't remember that, but I got a lot of emails since the last meeting, so I'll, I'll see if I missed it.
I do nothing with policies.
Okay. Yeah, and if you've got it handy and you just want to send it again, that would be awesome.
Yes, yeah, make it easier for you. Thank you.
Awesome. So, okay, so yeah, we'll wait on these with Jean, I guess. I don't, I don't know how heavy our next agenda is going to look at the moment, but I would encourage everybody to spend some time on these so that if Jean is in attendance, that we can at least knock a few of them off, especially the ones that are on third reading. It'd be good to take care of some of them, but it is 10 o'clock, so I'm okay with waiting a little bit also. So then we'll move on to number six, informational items. Patty, do you have anything?
I do. So the first one is budget. I can tell you that we've already been hard at work at the building level. Amber got all of our templates done for us and we, the principals have been working hard to get their numbers in. And for the first time today, we looked at the entire district budget, spent a few hours on that, going through all the numbers and Amber still has some other things that she needs to enter and we're still working on personnel, but we're on target, I hope, to get it to you by November 5th. Not saying it will be 100%, but at least you'll get to lay your eyes on it. And then we're still shooting for the NBC. We've traditionally managed to get the presentation to them right before Christmas break. So I know you don't have your meeting schedule finalized yet, but if it sticks to tradition and it's on a Thursday, that would be December 17th. So we'll wait to hear more when we get that schedule, but that's what we're shooting for and would also like it if you would remind the budget committee that we post the budget documents every time we give them to the school board. So anytime they want to start that review and see how it's progressing as we move along, it would give them at least a little bit of a heads up on what it's looking like, even though the board may make revisions, they could still kind of put their eyes on it if they want to. And then the other piece of information that I wanted to. kind of put their eyes on it if they want to. Uh, and then the other piece of information that I wanted to share was a conversation that we had as an administrative team this morning about, um, needing to now take some steps toward, um, truancy issues with some of our remote students and starting to send letters home. Because if you've made the choice to uh, participate in remote education and you're not, and you're consistently absent, and you're consistently not turning work in, then we need to do something about that. So it may come to the point where, um, if we reach out continuously and then follow up with letters, that we may be taking that remote option off the table for some students. We may letting them know, we may have to let them know that they either need to return to school or, um, pursue other opportunities, but we can't endorse, um, you know, claim to be educating a student that's not participating in the program. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And that's it.
Great. Any questions about those items?
Uh, Andy, this is Ann. Um, I just wanted to find out if you would ask the budget committee, um, at the next meeting. I've gone to other districts, uh, school board meetings in the SAU and some of them invite the budget committee to their first reading. So the budget committee gets a copy of their budget, um, prior, and then that way they can ask questions during that school board meeting. It will just say, because I know the first meeting that the school presents their budget to the budget committee, it's really just an information just to hand over the budgets, you know, no one can ask questions because they don't have time to read it. So I just thought maybe if the school board, Pembroke School Board would look to see, um, inviting the budget committee to our meeting.
Yeah, certainly. Um, I actually talked with them about that at the end of the cycle last year. I, my inclination, we can talk more about it. My inclination is not to invite them, like if we're going to get the first copy on November 5th, it would not be to invite them then, but rather after that meeting to send them a copy and invite them to the following meeting. Um, I don't like to try to take questions on a document that I haven't seen yet, uh, but I would like to get them earlier, you know, and get them thinking about it. Um, I think the, the earlier they're involved in the process, the better for sure.
Right, right.
They're, they've got some good minds over there that think of, think of things that I wouldn't think of to ask, so.
Thank you.
Um, so.
Andy, this is April. I just have two questions. Um, on the budget information that's posted on the SAU website. Um, I'm assuming, but I don't want to assume that that would go under Pembroke Budget and Financial Information. After that, there's several little subfolders. Will there be a new subfolder for 2021, 2022?
I, I, I know it'll be up there somewhere. I don't know. I don't know.
Well, I mean, it says budget. I, I just want to make sure. So if people, it's not just the budget committee who goes looking for this information. There's a residence. And so I think it would be nice to define where that information can be found.
Yeah, I'll make sure that I have that information, April, by that November 5th meeting when we're presented with it, so that we can let the public know that and where it'll be posted, so they can start taking a look at it.
Fantastic. And the other question that I have, um, is about the truancy issues. I was wondering if we could be informed. Um, what's typically the steps? I understand it sounds like most of this has to do with families who may have chosen remote. But are not actually, um, participating in remote. Um, what would, what are the next steps typically for a student if we were running school as normal? And because, do we have a truancy officer? Kind of what, what's the process? Would you, I'm wondering if our superintendent would educate us on those steps? What does it look like?
Sure. So we do, um, after X number of absences, we have sort of a form letter that would get mailed home to parents. Um, there's always intervention on behalf of both teachers, guidance counselors, reaching out to families, seeing if they need support, seeing if there's something going on that we should be made aware of. Um, in normal times, we do have Officer Weber at the school. Um, unfortunately now that's, you know, we aren't in normal times and I don't think that he's necessarily going to make home visits. Um, that's a little bit different than we would normally do. Um, so after we send those letters, we have some obligations to report that information out to, um, agencies such as DCYF and the local law enforcement. So it, you know, we hate to get to that point, so we do try to provide as much intervention as we can in between those steps. Um, and make sure that families are aware.
Um, this is April again regarding truancy issues. Um, would it be possible to give us an estimate, estimate of how many students that may, it's anticipated that it may involve at this point?
Sure. Can we invite the principals to share that information?
Certainly. Uh, we'll go with Mr. Morris first. No, we'll go with Mr. Morrison first.
Thanks a lot, Wendy. Uh, I don't, I don't have a real hard clad number. There, there's a, there's a couple of things going on with the remote kids. One of which is they're actually not attending. Um, and the, the other is they are not doing the work. So, um, not unlike what Patty said, you know, it's a case by case situation. And we will, um, I would, I would say right now that I'm concerned between, uh, about a half dozen to maybe eight at each grade level that this is not a good fit for them. And usually it's because they are not attending or they're late, uh, on a regular basis. Or frankly, they, what they, what they're doing is they will click their screen on, um, turn the video off and then don't respond for the whole period. So we have to do a little bit of, uh, research and investigating to find out what is actually going on. We try to support the family, of course, at first, uh, but there, there is a higher rate that we're concerned about than we typically, or what we anticipated. It's one of those things. We don't know what we don't know, um, until we're into it. And so we, we do have some concerns about, uh, you know, quite a number of students at this point at all grade levels.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Morris?
Uh, I sent out two, uh, letters last week. Uh, we probably have, uh, two to three students right now that are approaching that threshold. Uh, I would say that that is not, um, uncommon, uh, this time of year compared to other years, but it's, it's certainly something that we are going to keep an eye on.
Thank you.
And Ms. Carrie?
We have, um, about five of our fully remote students that we're really keeping track of. We've in-house created a, um, a process like, um, Patty was saying that we kind of build up to make sure that we've, um, contacted through our guidance counselor, through, um, Ms. Cass will jump in, I'll get in, um, and really kind of try to escalate it. And we will see a little bit of work come out of some of these kiddos, but then we tend to fall off. So we are, um, looking at about, about five that are having, um, consistent attendance issues.
Thank you. Um, this is April. I heard the numbers about remote students. How about students who are enrolled to attend in person? Are there any numbers or for each school for those who are enrolled to attend in person for truancy issues?
I can jump, yeah. Oh, I can jump in on that one. Yeah, um, we actually have a few more that we're tracking, uh, doing the work. They're not completing work on their asynchronous days. So they'll come in, they'll either physically, you know, they'll come into the building, but then we won't see them, um, or get anything from them on asynchronous. So we're following the same patterns and really looking at, um, tracking that and contacting, um, the parents frequently to see if we can get them to, uh, jump back in. And we have found, you know, down the road, somebody who needed their internet, you know, we really try to target what the issue is to help, um, support them versus going the truancy route. So that's why we start with our guidance counselors, our first step to see what we can do to help support them, get them back in to the, um, to the work.
So does that mean there's any students who are on the hybrid program currently in the truancy issue category?
They show up on their hybrid day, but they don't do any work on their asynchronous day. So we don't have anybody that we don't, we see them consistently on their hybrid, so we'll get them through that, but then on their asynchronous day, they're not doing any work. So they, it's, it's, it's a little bit, it doesn't follow as, as easy as when you're in full remote and they're inconsistently not there. Um, so we do have contact with the students. They're just not completing the work on the asynchronous days.
Are any of those students at this time at risk of being reported to DCYF or other law enforcement?
Um, Patty, I don't know that. I'm not sure I should speak to that.
Yeah, it's, when we're talking about that few students and it could be identifiable, we try not to go into a lot of detail when it's under 10.
There are students currently that are hybrid that are, it's not just, it sounds like it's not an issue just with the remote students. With that, is that accurate?
The difference between remote and hybrid is in hybrid, we can physically see them and they're physically in the building and we can contact with them. So we can catch things up or we can provide support that way. The problem with remote is that they go kind of radio silent where we don't see or hear from them at all. That's much more concerning because in the hybrid, we can at least get them in front of us and have that face to face. In the remote, we can't.
Thanks. I don't feel like my question was, I answered unless I just have to accept the superintendent when it's less than 10, there's no comment.
Um, let me try to help you a little bit more. So without, without giving a lot of personally identifiable information or talking about, you know, really small numbers of students, I can tell you that we do get to the point with students, if they're not responding and all of our interventions haven't worked, then we do absolutely have to reach out, um, and report that to DCYF to make sure that we don't have children that are being neglected. Does that help?
Um, Andy, I have a question. Um, so before it's reached out to DCYF, is the officer, the school resource officer sent?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can try to answer some of that. And, um, there's quite a process we go through. This isn't like we jump from, you know, we don't go to zero to 60. So we really spend a lot of time, uh, you know, reaching out to families. Um, you know, sometimes, uh, they're just not reporting to us or whatever. There, there's a wide range of, of reasons. And so we really spend a lot of time individually. Right now, I've asked staff really to give me some feedback on those kids that they feel are, um, not responding to one, either hybrid or the remote. And then we will discuss what we need to do from there. There might be some very legitimate reasons and there may be some that are not. So we do have a resource officer. In fact, we have, uh, we, we use the resource officer when needed, but there is a number of steps we take prior to that, uh, because we, you know, we're, we try to give the benefit of the doubt that's held at first. And then, uh, we develop a pattern, we develop history, and then we have to take action.
Um, Andy, can I ask a question? So Patty, you can tell me if this is equally, um, unanswerable, but maybe you could just give us a big picture. Um, compared to a non-pandemic year, how many, um, you know, are we having more or the same or less numbers of students that the school district has to report to the state?
That's a tough question to answer, but I think be, this, because of the scale, it's more, right? So we have less students remote, so the percentage would be more. But like Wendy said, it's, it's a really different situation that we're not laying our eyes on the kids at all. So it makes it a, you know, in our, in our eyes, it makes it a little bit more serious, but so it is a higher percentage just because it's a smaller number of students.
Uh, Andy, this is Ann. I know it sounds scary, but I really appreciate the, um, the steps that they go through to make sure these children are safe.
Any other questions on budget truancy? All right. Then we will move on to our second public comment section, agenda item number seven. Um, we will again aim to keep it 15 minutes and we'll try to keep each comment to three minutes. Um, if you go ahead and raise your hand virtually, if you'd like to contribute, and we'll look to the phone lines at the end again if there are any of those.
Andy, we have, there are three people that had their hands up that spoke before that haven't put so I, I guess I would just ask that people that spoke earlier put their hands down. And then if you want, I can see that it's put back up again and we can, just to make sure that you get a chance to speak. Um, the first up is Deanna.
Okay.
Hi, this is Deanna. I'm, uh, Dumont, um, Dumont, my last name, sorry. It's getting late. Um, on Donna Drive, too many D's. Um, I just want to say, uh, I'm pretty disappointed in the board for continuing to keep us hybrid. Um, everybody has been pretty strong voicing their opinions, um, for their children that they are not doing well. Um, in school because they're not getting enough school days and, um, my kids especially are amongst those kids. They love being at school. They have some really great teachers, but those teachers aren't able to do what they need to do, um, on those hybrid days. And I'm very grateful to have Boys and Girls Club to help them along, but it's not the same. And their education is going to continue to be failing them. And it's not those teachers' faults because they are not able to do what they need to do. And I really think you guys need to reconsider pushing out continuing hybrid for another six weeks for these poor kids. They need to get back to their teachers. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is.
Hi, uh, Brian Gleaton from Pembroke Street, and it is difficult to put into words my frustration and disappointment with this board. Um, echoing Deanna's comments, um, the, the decision to move hybrid out till November 20th is actually, in my opinion, understandable. We need to have a plan in place. What is not understandable is going back on the commitment that you made to the taxpayers to revisit every two weeks with no input from these taxpayers. We deserve the commitment that was given to us not to be changed mid-meeting. We also come here, meeting after meeting, month after month, and virtually beg for the option to go full time, not the directive that everyone goes full time. The option in the complete inactivity of the board and the administration of providing that option that is requested by the majority, every board meeting after board meeting after board meeting is disgusting. It's not even discussed. There is no plan to return to school. There is a hope that someday the numbers will be good enough to return to school. There is no action being taken to get there currently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your next up is.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Here we go.
Hold on one second, Melanie. Is everybody else muted? We've got some echoing.
Is that better?
Yes, it is. Great. Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to take a quick second to thank all of the board for making, and the administrators and the teachers for making some really, really hard decisions. Nobody planned on this. Um, I feel really bad for some of the Facebook comments that I've read tonight. Our teachers are working really hard, extra hours, and I just wanted to thank, and I wanted to take a minute and thank Karen Gershah and all of her team for taking care of our children with IEPs. I think we have an amazing school district here and I'm very grateful and appreciative. And I also want to thank you guys for giving it some time. We just entered hybrid. So far, we've been able to eliminate or haven't had out, outbreaks out over a few cases and we've been lucky. And I think it's smart to give it some time. From a medical standpoint, our numbers are going up. While we've been on the meeting tonight, in the past couple of hours, New Hampshire went from minimal to moderate risk. There were 53 new cases in New Hampshire today, and it's alarming to me that 15 of them were under the age of 18. I'm assuming under the age of 18, they're in a school somewhere. I'm sure they're not all homeschooled. And it is going to happen, and I think it's really smart to push it out, see how it happens. Hopefully we can keep a handle on it with everybody's goal to bring them back to school. And I just commend you for making some really tough decisions. Um, even though you're hearing some tough feedback and, um, I think you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Melanie.
Okay, uh, Elizabeth Richards, uh, has her hand up. I don't know if she ever put it down, so just want to give her a chance. Okay, Elizabeth Richards has her hand up. I don't know if she ever put it down, so just want to give her a chance if she did want to speak.
Sorry about that. I didn't put my hand out, but I will now. Sorry.
Thank you. And Kristen Doyle has her hand up, but she spoke earlier, so I'm not sure if she intended on speaking. Nope, she just put her hand down.
Sorry, my bad.
Okay. We have four phones. That's, you want to try those, Andy?
Yeah, crank them all.
All right.
All right. So if you're on the phone, you're unmuted. If you would like to speak, please state your name. Okay, hearing none. We can shut those. Thank you, everybody, for your comments and we will move on to agenda item number eight. Patty, are we still just small letter C?
Yes, but I did want to correct something. I think I told you there were two things and there are actually three, but all, all C.
Three things. Okay. So the, the board has need to go into a non-public session in accordance with New Hampshire RSA 91-8:3, Roman numeral 2, small letter C, which pertains to matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a board member.
Andy, I'm sorry. Andy, this is Amy. Can we also please add small letter A to that?
Sure, small letter A.
I can state what that is. It's.
I got it.
Okay.
That's the dismissal, promotion, compensation, or disciplining of an employee, or the investigation of any charges against him or her.
Thank you. I'll make a motion for us to go into non-public for little A and little C reasons, which have just been noted.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. On a roll call vote, April?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm yes. At 10:25 PM. If this is your first time.
There we go.
Andy, this is Amy. I'll make a motion to accept the child bearing request.
This is April, I'll second. This is April. I'm not sure. I did crack that.
Yeah, Andy, you're muted.
I made it so long without doing that. So we've got motion and a second. So roll call vote, April?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Thank you very much. We've got two other pieces of business if you so choose. Okay. Hearing no more, then.
If you give me a second, I might make another motion. I just need to get my materials in front of me.
Okay. So in four and a half hours, let's a couple more minutes.
I know.
Do you want me to help you with what the requests were to help?
Please.
Okay, so we have a request for an unpaid day of leave and we have a request for a tuition payment plan.
Okay.
You got muted somehow just then.
Darn it. I'll make a motion to approve the requested payment plan with the caveat that the, the reason would be because of the pandemic circumstances and the burden that that has put on everybody.
I would second. Amy, do you feel comfortable having a deadline of when that payment is to be made?
Yes, and I think what we talked about was by the end of the academic year.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Can we have a discussion on that?
A little bit.
Sure. Well, I'm not going to go outside. My discussion was, I believe, the end of the academic year. I'm not sure that that is, matches part of our discussion.
I believe it was the end of the semester.
I, correct.
Okay. I'm okay with the end of the semester as long as Ann will continue to second it.
Yes, I'm sorry. That's what I assumed that, that.
Okay, no, that was my mistake.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Sorry, I have to get a new pencil because my mechanical pencil ran out of lead. Okay, I'm back. On a roll call vote to approve payment plan to be paid in full by the end of the semester. Ann?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Thank you. And I will wait for a reasonable amount of time to see if there are any other motions. All right, hearing none. We'll move on to agenda item number nine.
Andy, I'll make a motion to deny the request for an unpaid day off, day off.
This is April. I will second that motion.
All right, on a roll call vote, April?
Uh, yes, affirmative.
Amy?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Okay, I think that's all that we had. So now I will move on to agenda item number nine, appointments, resignations, retirements. Anything, Patty? Perfect. Then I will accept a motion to adjourn after I say that our next regularly scheduled meeting is October 20th.
Andy, and I just have a quick question. When we were discussing the bus schedule, our Department of Public Works has not received a copy of that. So is that something that we can give them and probably the PD? I would like them to know what's happening on the routes in case something is happening, the DPW goes there first.
I mean, once they're approved, it, all they have to do is make a request.
This is April. I'm just curious why we would make them go through the motion of making a request and not work collaboratively and provide that information?
I mean, we, any one of us can provide it if we want to. I just, you know.
It's been supplied in the past. That's why I was just wondering. We have a new director and it hasn't been sent to him. So I can send an email as the board chair and ask for it.
Sure. I mean, and I don't mind sending it out either now that, I mean, we recorded it tonight. So we have an official thing. If you want to send me the correct email, I don't mind sending it on.
Okay, thank you.
Based on policy, is that something that a board member can send out? Or I believe request for information were to go through the superintendent's office based on policy? Is that correct? I just want to make sure none of us are making a misstep.
I mean, at this point, the bus routes are public information. So I don't know that the manner of them being delivered to anybody else matters at that point. They could go down the website and get them as soon as they're posted there.
Yeah, but I, we have a new director and he really wants to do a good job. And when we've been dealing with Jimmy Bovear prior, this has not been an issue. It had been with him as soon as school opened.
Yeah, no, no, I'm agreeing with you.
Boardmates, I'm really sorry, but is this something that we could have Andy and Patty handle outside of the meeting? And maybe we could adjourn?
Yeah, and, and just give me the email address. I'll make sure they get it.
Yeah.
Was that an official motion, Amy?
Yes, I moved to adjourn.
All right.
This is April, I'll second.
Thank you. On a roll call vote at 10:58, Amy?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.